I now call to order this October 3, 2012 Hampton City School Board Meeting. Ms. Barr, would you please call our role?
Ms. Henry, Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Pearson, Ms. Phillips, Ms. Smith, Ms. Mugler.
Here. Let the record show that all of the school board members are present tonight along with our superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, our student liaison, Mr. Alan Booth, and our deputy clerk, Ms. Subar. At this time, I'll turn things over to our student liaison.
Thank you, Adam Cherry, our support. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing Cameron Cannon, a fifth grader at Tucker Capps Fundamental School, to the board. He will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Cam, if you could please come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Believe in yourself by Julian K. Hunt. Set your standards high, you deserve the best. Try for what you want and never settle less. Believe in yourself no matter what you choose. Keep a winning attitude and you never lose. Think about your destination, but don't worry if you stray because the most important thing is what you've learned along the way. Take all that you've become to all that you could be. Soar above the clouds and let your dreams set free. At Tucker Capps, we have many clubs and organizations that are helping us believe in ourselves and focus on helping others. Last year, our Haffo International Club collected cans for recycling and used the money raised to purchase farm animals for families around the world. They also made hygiene kits for the homeless and collected newspapers for the SPCA. Our school sponsored Paws for a Cause, a fun activity to help the school's Relay for Life team. Our Gentlemen's Club mentored kindergarten and first grade students by helping them learn their math facts. We hope that their efforts will make the school, community, and world a better place. Thank you.
Cameron, if you could remain standing for just a minute. I had the pleasure of speaking with Cameron prior to tonight's meeting, and let me tell you, if there is a finer young man in this school system, well, you can find him because I couldn't. Cameron is not only actively involved in school activities, namely the Health and Nutrition Club, but he's a straight A student. And, all things considered, I might be so bold as to say a future valedictorian of Hampton City Schools. So Cameron, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, your favorite subject at school?
My favorite subject is science.
And what do you do in your free time, Cameron?
I like to play basketball and play video games.
Well, video games, no matter what parents say, they're kind of the gateway to the future right now. Do you have any family with you tonight, Cameron?
I have my mom here and my dad. I have my grandma and my granddaddy and my Aunt Joyce and my Uncle Sam.
If they could all stand. I've always said that education begins at home, and Cameron's parents and family are a fine example of this. Thank you again for joining us. Have an excellent rest of your school year, and hopefully, I'll see you in a few years at one of our graduation ceremonies.
Very nicely done, Cameron. Do you have anyone here from your school family?
I have Ms. Johnson, right here, my school principal.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Cameron.
You're welcome.
For being with us tonight. We appreciate your words tonight. Heavy on our hearts tonight is the sad news of the passing of Mr. Scott Bowers over the past weekend, Hampton City School Division employee for the last 28 years, since 1984. Mr. Bowers served as the longtime director of Hampton City Schools Cable Channel 46, WHCS, and now referred to as Hampton Peg TV, which is the combination not only of our Hampton City Schools cable channel, but our Hampton City cable channel. I think probably more exciting and more of a passion to Scotty was the broadcasting he did, not of our school board meetings and not of city council meetings, but of our Hampton City Schools athletic events. I'd say that's probably where his passion really lay. If we could join in a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Our Peg TV staff has appropriately prepared a video to tribute Scotty, and they're going to share that with us at this time.
Now batting for the Yankees, number 51, Bernie Williams.
Well, I have the privilege to work with a great crew and all the house-seasoned veterans. Well, I come from a large, supportive family. My dad was my hero. I have a lot of family in the school system. Sister is in the school system, my wife is in the school system, my daughter. I have a sister-in-law and a niece.
We appreciate the Bowers family for being with us tonight, and we extend to his wife, Diane, and sister Carolyn, and the entire Bowers family our deepest sympathy. Okay, we move on now to the portion...shoot, I was doing so well. We move on to our recognitions, and I'm going to turn over now to our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Mrs. Anne Stevens Cherry, assisted by our school board
Thank you, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Hampton City Schools family. Before we begin with the recognitions, I know she said we didn't have to introduce them, but the Bowers family is here showing so much love for Scotty. I want to just point to them and ask them, those who can and want to, please stand and be recognized so that all the people can see you as being a member of the family of the Scotty we love so well. Could you please stand and be recognized? We want you to know we share in your sorrow and your love for Scotty, as does, I see Deacon Earl is here from your church. Deacon Earl, would you please stand and be recognized? You've always been supportive of the Bowers family and all of those who come under your We start first with the Virginia School Board Academy Awards. I know you're probably wondering what's an Academy Award. For school board members throughout the state of Virginia, it is for those school board members and superintendent and clerk of the board, actually, who take it upon themselves to attend academies so that they can determine how better to be great board members and to tackle curriculum issues. The certificates that are being passed out will be to those board members who have raised the bar, so to speak, when it comes to the Academy Awards. And first, we'd like to call on Dr. Linda Shiflett, our superintendent, who has received an Award of Excellence, who will give the rest out to the school board members.
It's indeed my pleasure to award the remainder of the certificates to our school board members. First of all, an Award of Excellence to William David Pearson. An Award of Excellence to Martha M. Mugler. An Award of Excellence to Phyllis Taylor Henry. An Award of Distinction to Jennifer P. Phillips. And an Award of Distinction to Joseph C. Kilgore. It is absolutely my honor to work along with this distinguished body of individuals who represent our community and serve to guide the work of our school division. Please join me in thanking them for all they do for us each and every day.
For our next recognition, you probably are already aware that customer service is very important in Hampton City Schools, and because of that, people are able to nominate individuals in the school division for what they call the Dove Award, which stands dedicated of our valued employees. That's what Dove stands for. And those are for people who have gone above and beyond when it comes to delivering exceptional customer service to our external customers and our internal customers. And this month's Dove Award winners are actually two. I'd like to call on Darlene North and LaShonda Jewels of Phoenix Pre-K 8 School. Come up here. The good thing about the Dove Customer Service Award is the people who come on stage never know why they've been nominated until the actual night. You were actually nominated by a parent. If that parent is here, please raise your hand. I see you. You were nominated by, Ms...come on up. I want you to come on up, by Cantrees Pierce. Come to family. So now that you know who nominated you, you want to know what they said, right? Okay, this is what was written. "I would like to nominate Mrs. North and her instructional assistant, Mrs. Jewels, for Dove Award. These ladies made an awesome team in the Phoenix School Pre-K classroom. They made my daughters transitioning to public schools comfortable so much that I too was excited about the learning going on there. My daughter excitedly told me about the activities and love and care she received in their classroom. As a public school teacher, I know how we hold our summers close to our heart. Mrs. Jewels and Mrs. North's love and interest in their students continued throughout the summer. My daughter and her classmates were invited to join Mrs. North and Mrs. Jewels for a lunch playdate at Chick-fil-A. Mrs. North and Mrs. Jewels' students took up half of Chick-fil-A that Wednesday in July. It was clear that the students missed them as much as they missed their students. These kind actions displayed by Mrs. North and Mrs. Jewels were a reminder that teachers who teach well truly care about their students beyond the classroom. There were many occasions throughout the year that showed that these ladies were willing and prepared to go beyond and above for their students, and each child benefited from their love and kindness. Ladies, I'd like to say thank you as well, and coming from a teacher, that just says a whole lot because she, more than anybody, knows how difficult your job is, and the fact that you show that extra little bit of care for our children means a lot to all of us. On behalf of the school board, I'd like to present you both the Dove Award presented by the Hampton School Board for providing a caring and loving educational atmosphere for students and parents alike, dated this day, October 3, 2012.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask the family members of these two wonderful ladies to please stand, if you're in the audience, the family members of the two Dove Award winners. And Principal Anita Owens and the Phoenix family to stand, if you're in the audience. Okay, thank you so much and congratulations again. Now, I'd like to call on our Athletic Director, Beth Mayer.
Before I begin with the Claudia Dotson Award, I just wanted to extend my sympathies to the Bowers family. Scotty loved athletics, and you could tell. I mean, he was just smiling the whole time he was out there, and there's nobody that could have put on a better show. It was top-notch. I'd rather watch him than ESPN. The Phoebus High School Athletic Department has been awarded the Claudia Dotson Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award. Can I get any of our athletic...the people from athletics at Phoebus High School to come on up and be recognized? The Dotson Award is given to high school athletic programs that have established policies and procedures that make sportsmanship a priority and an expectation within the school and the school community. There were approximately 30 teams and 400 student athletes at Phoebus last year. Thirty teams. Each team and each student athlete made earning the Dotson Award possible. The Phoebus athletes demonstrated integrity and ethics throughout the year, and the administration gave them the tools they needed to be successful. This award is the most prestigious award given by the VHSL, in my opinion. To receive this award means that the athletic program at Phoebus is going in the right direction. This award is not given to one team or one individual. It is with the leadership of the administration, the dedication of our athletes, and the support from our community that Phoebus High School is the very first Hampton City School to be awarded this great award. I'm very proud of you.
On behalf of the school board, I'd like to congratulate you as well, and I just wanted to say that Deputy Director Tom Zamorski of the VHSL said, "I consider this to be the Virginia High School League's most prestigious award. It's the only award that the entire school is graded on." And like Ms. Mayer said, there are 400 athletes there. Y'all have done well with them, you've taught them well, you've represented our district well. You're the first one in our district, in our city, that has received this award. Two York County schools have received this award. No other schools on the entire Peninsula District, none others, except Phoebus and those two York County high schools, have received this award. So that says a lot about what you guys are doing with our athletes. I want to thank you, and I want to challenge our other high schools. We want to see all of y'all up here next year getting this same award. Thank you. On behalf of the school board, we'd like to present you with this certificate. Congratulations, Phoebus High School Athletic Department, being awarded the Claudia Dotson Virginia High School League's Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award, signed by Linda Shiflett, our superintendent, and Martha Mugler, our chairman. Sportsmanship quote, "Good sportsmanship is not a singular act, but a habit. You are what you do repeatedly." Shaquille O'Neal. Thank you. Y'all are doing something wonderful.
And just to note, the Virginia High School League will be sending the Phoebus administration a huge banner to display in their gym stating the Claudia Dotson Sportsmanship Award winner for 2011-2012.
Congratulations again. Good job. You know, we had a wonderful opening of our school year. I don't think it could have been better, but there were so many people who helped us, both externally and internally. And to talk a little bit about that and to present some very special people with a very special certificate is the President of our Hampton Council of PTA/PTSAs, Pam Crum.
Thank you, Anne, and Dr. Shiflett, and Chair Mugler, for allowing me the opportunity to present these awards. The Kickitans football team took time away from their training and weightlifting and came out and helped us unload 40 large U-Haul boxes of school supplies that was actually donated to the PTA for Hampton City Schools by Waters Edge Church. And so, in an effort of giving back and recognizing these students, we are presenting them certificates of community service for them to start their portfolio. So at this time, I would like to ask the Kickitans football team to join me on the stage so I can present them with their certificates. And please forgive me if I do not pronounce your names correctly. Blame it to the head and not the heart. Brian Litscom. Jeremy Schultz. He's not here. Zachariah James. Corbin Baxter.
Still want to pronounce it. Thank you.
Dejon Richardson, he is absent. Is that saying? Dejon Hogan. They are alike, they're just spelled differently. And Will Wright. And as you see, they had no problems being able to lift those heavy boxes at the time. And we do want to thank Mr. Coley for bringing the gentleman out that day. We had a bit of a confusion because we were at Mallory School, and some of them went downtown because that's where Google Maps, of course, directs you. But they did a fantastic job. No one slacked, nobody complained. It was hot, it was very hot, and we were just so pleased to have them, and thank you so much. Be sure to keep up with your certificates, so when you start filling out those applications, although you probably won't need them because you'll be getting those scholarships for football, but just in case, just to show them the good work that you've done in Hampton, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Will Wright. I'd like to apologize for our appearance out here. I'm sorry, we just came from practice, I'm sorry. This isn't a good way to represent Kickitans High School, but I apologize. This isn't our normal appearance. Thank you.
Gentlemen, on behalf of the school board in Hampton City Schools, thank you for making us look good. Thank you for helping us do things for our kids. You're good role models, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it. We'd also like, if any of your family members are here, to stand, along with Principal Raymond Haynes. Please stand and see your A.D., Lee Martin. And now for our final recognition. We had a contest recently. It was called the Every Child, Every Day Essay Contest. And we asked...first of all, it was open to everybody in the school division, and we asked them to share their most compelling or powerful every child, every day experience for us. The grand prize winner of this essay contest would receive an all-expense-paid trip for two. The trip was the result of an incentive package that our department, Public Relations and Marketing, won, and Carolyn Bowers and I had packed our bags, and Dr. Shiflett said, "Unpack." So, since we couldn't go, we decided that...the DOT actually decided, because it was tough getting my bags unpacked. The DOT decided that we wanted to open this up to the entire Hampton City Schools family, faculty, staff, and they were asked to write the essay, and we had judges. The judges were all external. They met on Monday, they looked at all of the entries, and I want to... And I want to say a little bit about the judges. All of the entries were assigned a number, okay? So they didn't have a name specifically like Anne Stevens Cherry, I would be number four. And the judges were Leader Drury, Pam Crone, A.G. Wambel, who is here, Anne Short, and Ruth Ann Kellum. Now, I know A.G. is here. Are any of the other judges here? Oh, Ann, is that you? Stand, honey. I've never met you, but we've been emailing. Nice to meet you. And A.G., you want to stand? Okay, thank you. Now, the judges told me, they wept, they cried, that these things that people wrote were so heartfelt. In fact, I got an email from Anne Short that I just wanted to read to you. She says, "Thank you for having me as part of the group. After we got rolling this morning, I had a wonderful time and felt so good about our conclusions. I love being around people who have a heart to bless others. Wednesday, some teachers will be blessed. Today, I was blessed." So that told you the powerful piece that the judges felt when reading these wonderful entries. But here's the kicker. They kept asking the facilitator, who was Joan Davis from Organizational Development, "Are you sure there's only one winner?" And we were like, "Yes, we only won one trip, one winner." And they were like, "But these are so good. Can we pick another one?" Yep, if you pay for it. Because there's one trip and one winner. So these judges, all external to Hampton City Schools, actually had five they were looking at. One clearly, they thought was the winner, but there were four that were so close, they felt bad about not awarding anything. So you know what they did? They sat around and A.G. Wambel said, "You know what? I've got a blank check." And they all contributed so that each of those finalists would get a $100 Visa card along with another donor, a $100 Visa card for just entering the contest. So let's have a round of applause just for the judges. Okay, now to our five finalists. I'd like to call on Burbank Counselor Christine Rogers-Rader. Okay. What we did with these, because we wanted to give you a snippet of an idea of what they did. Some of them were a page, some were half a page, some were four pages. So we condensed them so that you can have an idea. Is that okay with you? Okay. Christine Rogers-Rader is the counselor at Burbank Elementary School. And she said she's seen a lot of students come through in her years, but there were two that really touched her heart. And they were sisters. They were in the second grade and the fourth grade. Actually, she said the students were doing well academically. Actually, she said they were not behavior problems. And the parents did come in to volunteer. However, she mentioned that appearances can fool you. The entire family of four was living in a small 20-year-old minivan that was on its last legs. They washed their clothes at the beach. They washed up in the bathrooms at McDonald's. The kids did their homework in the parking lot of Walmart because as they said, "The police don't come and make the move and the light is good for the homework." The family wasn't always homeless. They fell on some hard times. But Christine Rogers-Rader could not let that happen. Due to the physical ability of the daddy's job, he wasn't able to do some things. They had no income coming in and they had quickly used up all of their savings. So Ms. Rogers-Rader decided to step in and help what she said was a deserving family. The mother came out of the blue one day and asked, "Can you help my daughters with self-esteem?" And she did. And the more she talked about it, she found out she needed to change this world forever. Hearing all the details really pulled at my personal heartstrings, she said. "All I could think of was the words, 'Every child, every day, whatever it takes.'" Long story short, she worked for this family. She contacted every shelter on the Peninsula, Upper Peninsula, South Side, and even Eastern Shore. All of the shelters were full. Then she found out about a program called A Night's Welcome. They take adults, not children. So she held bake sales. She washed cars. She got her husband and family involved. Even her eight-year-old daughter took money out of her personal piggy bank to help the family. She used this money to get them an extended stay motel. She knew that she had crossed an important hurdle, but they still had no income. She personally took the family to Social Services Department. She talked to everybody who could make a difference. In the end, they found his social security record because before he didn't have any identity, so he couldn't get a job. She was able to find, after submitting the paperwork, that he was approved for social security benefits, disability benefits, and even Medicaid insurance. She had found temporary housing. She had income. She had insurance, but no permanent place to stay. Working as hard as she could, she was able to find a place which took people with medical disabilities. It was a medically approved apartment. And the father was excited because this miraculously opened up. She writes, "Of course, I had no idea what I'd got myself into at the time. But to make sure they had enough money, even where they were living, she and her husband took money out of their vacation savings account, which they were planning to do, to go out of state." They did not go out of state. But she says, "I would do everything all over again without a second thought. The family that I helped told me hundreds of times that I was an angel that saved them. Little do they know that they saved me. Throughout my journey, I remembered the words, 'Every child, every day, whatever it takes.' In this case, I changed the meaning to 'Every family, every day, whatever it takes.'" That was an absolutely beautiful story. Thank you so, so much for caring that much for our children because we know that there are those out there that really need heroes like you, and you are a hero. On behalf of the Hampton City School Board, congratulations to Ms. Christina Rogers-Rader, School Counselor at Burbank Elementary School, for having a positive impact on every child, every day. Signed by our Superintendent Linda Shiflett and Chairman of the Board Martha Mugler. Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say I love my job and I'm just so thankful that I had the opportunity to help children, to help families. And this family truly touched me, touched everyone at Burbank. And I'm just so blessed to have the opportunity. That was in the right place at the right time because, again, they were my angel and it was every family. So thank you.
I'd like members of Christine's family to please stand along with Burbank Principal Troy Latouche and staff to stand and be recognized. Now for our next finalist. Ms. Sears is a night custodian at Bethel High School. She says, "Every day, every child, every day, whatever it takes is not just a motto for us, but rather a belief in our hearts. Therefore, my most compelling story happened at a school meeting at my child's school, which is Bassett Elementary. I saw two children standing in the corner of the hallway with their mother. Both children were crying. I then recognized the family I had seen in the hallway was a family that stayed behind me on the next street over. So I walked over and asked if everything was okay. One child said, 'We don't have any money for uniforms and that we have to wear the same ones all the time.'" Then the mother of the children slowly said that they were all right. And then she started explaining to me how her job, she had just got laid off from, and it was hard being a single mother. And we talked and we talked. After the meeting was over, I could not stop thinking about this family. So I checked my bank account the same night and saw that I had $250 in my account. I knew that I would save more soon, so I went to the bank at the ATM and took $200 out and put it in an envelope and dropped it off to her home the very next day and said, "I hope this helps a little." She gave me a hug and the kids were screaming, "Now, Ma, we can go to Walmart." And she said, "We sure can." And she thanked me until I got in my car. That made a big difference to someone within my child's school at Bassett. Stories just keep getting more and more beautiful. And thank you, on behalf of the school board, for caring for our children. This is a certificate congratulating Tiffany Sears, Night Custodian at Bethel High School, for having a positive impact on every child, every day. Signed by Linda Shiflett, Superintendent of our schools, and Martha Mugler, Chairman of the school board. And here is your gift card. Do you, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you and ever since that day, I've been blessed.
Does Ms. Sears has any family here? Would you please stand? And also Bethel Principal Ralph Saunders, that's her family. And Mr. Saunders. Please stand and be recognized, the Bethel family. Thank you so much. Now we're calling on Bethel once again, Melissa Polatin. Melissa Polatin wrote that she'd been teaching social sciences at Bethel High School for some 10 years now. And while she thinks it's important for students to be well-rounded, she said it's also important to educate them in a subject matter, but also in life matters. She's a sponsor of a club called The Inclusive Club. And she was so tired of hearing so many derogatory names being called by students that she decided to develop a campaign called Use Another Word. This Use Another Word campaign became very popular because she had slogans on buttons that included "Cursing is not cool," "Dare you not to swear," "Stop the fad, don't say fag." Immediately, the buttons were a hit. She said so many negative names were being used in that school to include the N-word and all-around school systems that she felt she had to do something. She even received an email from a Bethel student, she said, who told her of an experience running on the track where she had heard cursing from some other school students. So they extended it beyond Bethel High and to another school. But it went beyond just saving one or two students. Even the teachers, the faculty members and staff started wearing the buttons. They started buying them so fast, you couldn't keep them in stock. So everybody got excited about this project called Use Another Word. She carried it over into the National Youth Violence Prevention Week where she had a door decorating contest, poster contest, and students signed a pledge, pledging not to bully. And they received a bracelet for signing the pledge. And finally, collecting stuffed animals that she donated to a women's shelter. She writes, "I try to lead by example. Show students and all students that words can hurt and there are some words that just do not need to be said. I love teaching. I love creating lessons, interacting with my students, teaching them history, but I also love teaching them character. Seeing them mature, support each other, make them better. Every child, every day." Like I said, they just keep getting better and better and it's important that people know that words do hurt and I commend you for your effort getting that message out there. I think that's something that every school should be looking at, partaking in. Once again, and a certificate here from the Hampton City School Board congratulates Melissa Polatin, Instructional Leader, Social Science Department, Bethel High School, for having a positive impact on every child, every day. Signed by Linda Shiflett, Superintendent of our schools, and Martha Mugler, our chairperson. And here is your gift certificate. Thank you so much. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be at Hampton City Schools.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to call on Mr. Raymond McNeil, Food Service Manager. Hello. You're a young-looking thing. You look like a student. Okay. Mr. McNeil wrote, "My name is Raymond McNeil and I work as a food service manager for Hampton City Schools." He was currently assigned to Tucker Capps Elementary School when he wrote this because they're moving him from school to school. "My special moment happened to me actually last week outside of school hours. I was out in public and was recognized by one of our students and he waved and said to his mother, 'Mommy, I know him. He works in the cafeteria in my school and he helped me remember my number so I could get my lunch.'" It really warmed my heart to know that in the little bit of time that I have been with the school division, I have made even a small impact on one student's life. I've had children in elementary school and I still have one in elementary school and it is so important to have somebody there to help them with that number. Thank you so much, on behalf of Hampton City Schools and the school board, for caring for our children. On behalf of the Hampton City School Board, we congratulate Raymond McNeil, Food Service Manager, Hampton City Schools, for having a positive impact on every child, every day. Signed by Linda Shiflett, Superintendent of our schools, Martha Mugler, Chairperson. And here is your visa card. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you for the opportunity to work for Hampton City Schools.
I don't know if any food service people are here, but the Tucker Capps people may be here because that's where he was working when he wrote it. So please stand and be recognized. Any people who are here, thank you. Principal? Aw, that's nice. Now, I told you there were five finalists. Now I'm going to announce the grand prize winner. I am not going to call the student's name in the essay that the winner wrote, but I am going to read part of it. The person who won the grand prize talked about a student who was bright, insightful, strong-willed, and caring. But she said, when she entered her class, a few months after school began, she wasn't always that way. She didn't want to leave her current classroom because this person taught self-contained classroom designed for children with emotional problems. And this student sincerely disliked the idea of being the only seventh grader in a classroom of eighth graders. She thought the teachers would only concentrate on the eighth graders. This teacher convinced, along with her assistant, this child, that would not be the case. But she had a hard time because many times, she writes that the student would get under her desk, go into fetal position, suck her thumb, curse at them, threaten to hurt them. They continued to not give up. So this teacher found out that the child was getting in trouble in the morning during electives. But the child was being teased because the students were making fun of her hair. So this teacher, instead of punishing the student, took the student to the hairdresser, got her hair done, then took her shopping and bought her some clothes. Slowly, the student began to trust this teacher. So the student talked about her family, her disappointments, a mother who was in jail and a father who didn't like her. Even the teacher said when she would go to the house to try to get the IEP sign, there was no interest. This teacher would not give up and leading a special project at the school called Project Citizen, she decided to invite this student with the rest of the eighth graders for this citizenship project. Each class would design a project to present to the Hampton City Council. Each class would design a project to present to the Hampton City Council, and they would select a winner. This student, who used to be under the desk, sucking her thumb, cursing, threatening to hurt, not believing that anybody believed in her, was part of the team and suggested to the team that you do your project on homelessness. Why? Because she had been homeless. She explained it to the students. They loved the idea. This student, who's supposed to be emotionally disturbed and who many people thought would give up on her, because of this teacher, wrote a beautiful poem that was part of the entire package presented to city council. She was invited to a luncheon along with her classmates. She gave the presentation to Hampton City Council. They won. Needless to say, they went to the state and national competitions. They won the state competition and won the highest honorable mention in the national competition. This teacher writes, "All of this from students who are classified as emotionally disturbed." Says, "The day after middle school graduation, this student cried. She didn't want to leave. She was afraid to move on to high school. Through our own tears, we assured her that it would be all right, and we would always be there for her, and she could call us anytime." This teacher ends by saying, "I've often heard the question, why would anyone want to be a teacher, living on a relatively small income and preparing lessons every night and weekends? The answer? Because of students like this. We love our students and believe that we live the mantra, every child, every day, whatever it takes." Please welcome to the stage our grand prize winner, Cheryl McLaughlin from Sims Middle School.
You know, I've sent an email to someone today about one of my son's teachers who has really helped him. And I tell my kids, there's always going to be somebody that touched you in school, a teacher that you will always remember. That young lady will always remember you for the rest of her life and how you changed her life. And I can't thank you enough personally and on behalf of Hampton City Schools. This is a well, well-deserved honor. Cheryl McLaughlin, science teacher, Sims Middle School, grand prize winner of Hampton City Schools' Every Child, Every Day Essay Contest. Thank you for having a positive impact on every child, every day.
Thank you. Now, Ms. McLaughlin, I got your trip. Okay. Ms. McLaughlin, first of all, any member of your family here and the Sims family, please stand and be recognized. Aw, isn't this wonderful? Okay, great. As the winner of the Division's Every Child, Every Day Essay Contest, the trip is sponsored by Capital Marketing Concepts. So we didn't give you a Visa Card, because they're going to give you a $250 Visa Card, plus a four-day, three-night trip for two to your choice of one of these exciting cities. And you get to choose: New York, Chicago, Scottsdale, San Francisco, San Diego, San Antonio, or South Beach Miami. Okay? That's good news. The bad news is a quick turnaround. So here's all the information you need. Please don't lose this. Carolyn Bowers, I don't know Ms. Bowers, you know Ms. Bowers, call her tomorrow afternoon, and she will help you through this. And congratulations again. And let's have a round of applause for all of our wonderful finalists.
And congratulations to all of those students who were recognized tonight, as well as our staff members. Continue to always make us look good at Hampton City Schools. We'll move on now to our consent agenda, which includes items 3.01 through 3.07, including Personnel Report 12-19, minutes from the school board meeting of September 5 and 19, the certification of the closed sessions of September 5 and 19, field trips, and expulsion number 2011-269. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would agree that we approve the consent agenda as presented. It has been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Ms. Barr, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Abstain.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries.
We move now to our superintendent and staff reports. I turn things over now to Dr. Linda Schiflett.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Our first report this evening, continuing our reports on our core content areas, is a Language Arts update. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you our curriculum leader for English Language Arts, Ms. Tiffany Hardy. I'll just...
Good evening. Chair Mugler, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the school board, Superintendent Schiflett, parents, students, staff. My name is Tiffany Hardy, and I'm your curriculum leader, and I'm excited to share an update on Language Arts K-12 for Hampton City Schools. This is the vision statement that our department has developed. It's our guiding mantra for the year, and I'll give you a moment to read it.
Thank you.
If you'll take note in those final colored items, articulate speakers, active listeners, effective writers, and independent strategic readers, this is what we want to give to our students. These are the skills we want our children to go to the next grade with, to move to the next level with, to go beyond school with. We feel this is what they need to be successful in school and beyond. Our team has some new faces this year. Debbie Feringer has returned to us as Elementary Teacher Specialist. She was previously in the department, serving as an Elementary Teacher Specialist. She spent some time in our elementary schools as an Assistant Principal, and has returned to us now, and she specializes in grades three through five. Also, it's serving our elementary schools is Darlene Ingram. She's continuing this year. She has several hats that she wears for us. She is our Early Intervention Reading Initiative Grant Coordinator, as well as our K-2 Teacher Specialist. She is also our point of contact for the UVA Masters in Reading cohort, and I'm very excited to share with you, thanks to Hampton City Schools, we've afforded a number of people the opportunity to work towards this, and they will be celebrating graduation in December of this year. Marsha Grant has recently joined us as Secondary Teacher Specialist. She will support in grades six through 12, and she's joining us from Bridgeport Academy, and she has served there as a teacher, as well as instructional leader. Beth Horn will be continuing to support us as our CITT, and Brenda Johnston will continue to support us as our Administrative Support Specialist. In addition to our immediate team in Language Arts, we have a number of personnel who are supporting literacy throughout our division. Our human resources are quite extensive when it comes to Language Arts. We have approximately 600 K-5 teachers who provide instruction in Language Arts. We also have over 200 teachers who support us in the areas of six through 12 in classroom instruction. We have direct support from 36 instructional leaders from our buildings, and each of these work towards the core instructional program. Focus literacy support and intervention also comes in many forms, including 24 early reading intervention assistants, who serve our PALS-identified students in K and 1, 22 reading specialist literacy leaders, who support our elementary schools, five reading coaches that are a combined effort between Title I and Language Arts. Collaboratively, the two departments work with these individuals to provide coaching support in our Title I schools. Also, a collaborative effort are the reading interventionists. These individuals also support our Title I schools, and they provide intervention to our Tier 2 students. We also have nine reading teachers at the secondary level, and they work with our Read 180 program. This is going to be an exciting year for Language Arts. We have a number of changes. We are excited about many of them. I know change isn't easy for everyone, but there are a lot of things going in the right direction, both at the state level, as well as in our local level. The biggest thing to focus on for this year is that the 2010 Standards of Learning from the state have been fully implemented. This means they are completely incorporated to all of our curriculum, art of all of our resources, and all of our instructional programs. Something to note about the 2010 standards is that they have taken a good foundation of the previous standards, but they have made sure that all of the standards work with vertical alignment or vertical articulation. So now there aren't any holes or gaps in the standards. When you go from K up through 12, there's a logical articulation in every single area. It's a good foundation or premise for our curriculum. Another area that we're going to be facing changes in will be our Standards of Learning Tests. The tests naturally have to change to the standards, and there's increased rigor with the SOLs, and therefore, there will be increased rigor in the tests. One of the places that you'll see the increased rigor is that some of the core skills have been moved into lower grades. So for example, research, which was heavily emphasized in seventh through 12th grade, has now been moved to an early introduction in third grade. And there are several other areas in which you see that rigor being pushed down into those earlier grades. One of the key changes we're focusing on early this year is the writing test, and there are several changes to the writing test. One of them will be the inclusion of the technology-enhanced items that will require students to be able to not just choose one multiple-choice item, rather, they'll have to evaluate a large number of options to evaluate corrections in writing. That's for the multiple-choice portion. For the direct writing portion, there's now a prescribed mode. In the past, the writing test was just an invitation to write, and students could respond in any mode they wanted. They now must respond in a prescribed mode. So our students in fifth grade will either get an expository or narrative. The children in eighth grade may have to respond in expository or persuasive. And our end of course will definitively be persuasive writing, and it will probably include the requirement of argument and counterargument. And that is a very mature, sophisticated skill. We've already been aware of this change. It's embedded in all of our new curriculum, and we're already hot on working with professional development with our teachers. So these are good moves forward, but we recognize that they are challenges that we face. Some additional things to point out is that the research will be in the writing SOL. Stems have changed in the questions, and there's heavy emphasis on vocabulary, including word analysis strategies, key prefixes, key roots, et cetera. These are all very good things that students need to learn. We don't just teach to the test. We want them to be good, strong readers. These are skills that they need in order to be able to do that. Something that we're working heavily with is pairing passages. You'll notice that after the old SOL tests, students never tested like that again. They tested in much more rigorous ways. We would rather give them learning experiences and prepare for much harder tests that they will be facing later in life. So paired passages will be something we emphasize in instruction and assessment, as well as those vocabulary strategies. Our plan of action, how do we address these few changes? Well, one thing is that we implemented word study two years ago in kindergarten, moved it up to first grade last year, and we have now trained all of our secondary teachers, and they are moving into implementing word study. And this is a differentiated approach to teaching students spelling, sound, concept, concept of letter, concept of word, and we'll be continuing to spiral it up. Our literacy personnel last spring were repurposed, and individuals had the option to apply for the newly-defined roles of literacy leader, coach, interventionist. Several wanted to go back and teach in the classroom, and then others took on the literacy roles. But by repurposing these roles, we were able to make sure that every single elementary class, every single elementary school would be directly supported by a literacy leader. And they are working with literacy teams to build action plans at each school to address the specific needs of their schools. We also are continuing to work on fidelity to the model. We have a very prescriptive model for both K-5, as well as now 612 instruction, and those designs are research-based. And working with the Division Leadership Team, school administrators, our department, and Title I, we've been able to identify where there are gaps or support needs for instruction, and making sure that we are maintaining fidelity to that model in order to maximize the learning that can occur in those classrooms. We also are incorporating professional development in many formats. We are doing face-to-face, as well as videos, webinars, a variety of delivery systems, so that teachers can continually get information that they need in order to, you know, improve their instructional strategies, as well as respond to all of the changes that they are facing. We started with professional development in the spring and continued it through the summer, and now have done so in the fall, and we will continue to do so. Also, differentiated text selection. This is going to be critical. In K-5 last year, we had heavy emphasis on using the DRA, the Developmental Reading Assessment, in order to identify level and stage of reader. K-5 teachers then use that information in order to choose leveled text to teach students, meet them where they are, and take them to the next level. As I've shared with the board previously, if you try to share a text with a child that's way above their level, they can access barely any of it. Or if you try to use a text that's way too below their level, they become bored and understimulated. We want to meet students at their level so that they can increase significantly. We are carrying that work into 612. This means no more of the teaching the same story to all the children in the classroom. It's about identifying the level of the child and making sure you choose texts that are appropriate to that child, choosing appropriate literature to meet the needs of the curriculum and the students. We're using the SRI, the Scholastic Reading Inventory, which is an aspect of the Read 180 program, to identify the Lexile scores. That's the reading level of the individual students, and then teachers will choose text accordingly. These are research-based best practices. We emphasize the need to choose appropriate differentiated delivery systems and text in order to help students improve their actual reading comprehension. We also implemented a new curriculum design. In the secondary grades, in six through 12, we moved away from an exclusive genre-based system, because if you only ever teach one genre, for example, fiction or poetry at one time, children learn a lot less about that actual genre. If they compare it to other genres, they learn a lot more about it. That comparison/contrast is exactly what helps them to understand the features of a text versus the nonfeatures. And so every single unit is not a genre-based. It will include fiction and nonfiction, as well as other genres within. They are all centered around an essential question and a theme. And the teachers have been getting training from the summer through into the fall on how to choose texts, how to develop writing prompts, how to use media in order to answer those essential questions. And the intent is that at the beginning of the unit, they have a little bit of an understanding of that essential question. Through reading, discussion, writing, creating, and thinking, at the end of the unit, they have a much deeper understanding of that essential question, as well as a deeper understanding of the world around them. We work on a tiered intervention approach. Tier one is our core instructional program delivered to all students. This is the one I was just talking about with the curriculum design and the 2010 Standards of Learning. This is the foundation of all instruction, delivered in the classroom by a single teacher or a pairing or combination of teachers. In the elementary level, it's a combination of whole-group instruction and small-group rotations. Those are prescribed rotations with a specific amount of time. The flexibility for the teacher is which text they choose and the strategies they use in each of those small-group rotations. At the secondary level, it's the essential question and the texts that they choose that allow that differentiation. Tier two, these are targeted intervention students, students who are not meeting our expectations, who are not able to be, to perform or to meet proficiency with tier-one instruction alone. These students need more support, more assistance. In the elementary level, we use the PALS and the DRA data to help identify students who need targeted, specific intervention. These students receive that intervention in small-group settings, and they can receive it from the reading interventionist, the reading specialist, the classroom teacher. Any of those combinations can work with the student either during the Language Arts block or during the intervention block. At the secondary level, we use the SRI to identify students or previous SOL performance, and then those students are targeted with intervention through the Read 180 program, and that's delivered by the Read 180 teacher, and it receives an elective credit. And then the smallest number, usually less than 15%. These Tier 3 students need intensive intervention. These are your students, we've attempted Tier 1 intervention, and it hasn't been enough. They need and deserve more. These students are eligible for pull-in, push-in, or pull-out intervention support in the elementary schools, and that can be delivered either through a special ed... in the elementary schools, and that can be delivered either through a special educator, or it can be delivered by the ESL person, or by reading personnel, depending on whether your Title 1 or non-Title 1 school. You may have different personnel available to support these students. We have worked closely with the Special Education Department to select a program, and it is a combination program that has direct instruction and guided reading support that is developmental based on the ability of the student. And that program is through Voyager, and it's either the Read Well program, which is our K-1, or the Language Program that runs from 2nd up through 12th grades. At the secondary level, we continue to use the Language Program. The majority of students who receive this do tend to be students with special education support, but not always, and it's not exclusionary. They also can receive the Read 180 program, and you can see that special educators, ESL personnel, regular educators, reading personnel, et cetera, can provide that level of support. The most important thing to remember in this is that we look no longer at the individual by the grade they're in, more at the stage of reading that they're in. And if we address the stage they're in, we're more likely to help them make more significant gains and catch up to their same-age peers. If we continue to only deliver to them what's expected on grade level, they will actually fall further behind than if we did nothing at all. And what we want to do is make sure we are pushing them the right direction. Our curricula are accessible on SchoolNet. They are aligned to the 2010 SOLs. They were developed by our department along with feedback and work from core teachers at each grade level to provide recommendations on text selection and strategies and key practices, and they have been implemented completely as of this fall. We piloted two grade levels with the new template, kindergarten and 6th grade, last year, took feedback from teachers who were teaching it in order to make appropriate revisions before implementing completely for all of the grade levels this year. The ways in which we'll be working to build capacity with our instructional personnel. We've been offering professional development since June. We made offers to teachers to attend professional development over the summer and/or in the fall during the pre-service week. We offered Word Study to our Grade 2 teachers. We're now following up with Word Study reviews for kindergarten and 1st grade teachers who've already had training but would like some refreshers, some new ideas, as well as any new kindergarten and 1st grade teachers who haven't previously had the training. We've also been offering literacy and intervention planning for our administrators during the Administrator's Academy this summer, so that all administrators are well-versed on the practices and the support we have to offer. We offer training on our new curricula from kindergarten through 12th grade, as well as instructional strategies, including how to choose level text and how to pair passages. We'll be continuing that support in multiple modes throughout the year. Our ongoing includes the Word Study. The writing changes. We started immediately the first week of school, sharing with teachers what the significant changes are, how to help prepare. And again, we are not teaching to the test. We are helping teachers discover better ways to make better writers, so that regardless what they see on the test, they'll be prepared to respond to it. We're embedding the technology-enhanced items, and we've been doing training on how to help teachers create their own grammar and vocabulary practice items using the technology-enhanced items, so that they can use flip charts on the Promethean boards and embed them right into their instruction with authentic text, so that it's a part of instruction and not a test prep technique. We're also working on the SRI. We've prepared several videos for teachers to walk them through how to use it, how to embed it into their instructional planning, as well as a reading comprehension strategy series that we have been doing with our instructional leaders, and we'll be continuing this year. And then our media literacy, supporting teachers on how to use media to excite kids to the world that is available to them so that they can become consumers and users of information. We also provide monthly support. We work with our instructional leaders on a train-the-trainer model in several areas, having those instructional leaders take materials, resources, and strategies back to their schools to present. We also meet with our reading specialists on a monthly basis to talk about intervention strategies, new research in literacy, and ways to support their teachers and their students in the area of literacy. We meet with our reading coaches with Title 1. We provide the content support, so that they are implementing and they are providing support that is consistent with the model that we have developed. We've created electronic newsletters to keep a constant line of communication and updates and reminders to the teachers, so that they've got a quick checkpoint to figure out where they should be, as well as webinars on key issues and topics that are critical to the teachers this year. Each of our elementary schools has been working to develop their school-level literacy plans using their literacy leaders, using their existing data to identify which students need intervention support, as well as which teachers might need instructional support. It's been very exciting to listen to a lot of our reading specialists share with us as they learn which teachers are now coming out and showing their leadership and wanting to help other teachers in their buildings. And so what they're doing is using this as an opportunity to identify and rein in some of those resources and use them to their advantage. We'll also be doing walkthroughs to check on the fidelity to the model, as well as identify instructional strategies to share with others. We're continuing to use the online Hampton City Schools benchmarks as a quarterly opportunity to collect data. Our reading support specialists and our interventionists are keeping intervention documentation to help us track the progress for individual students. We also collect our data from PALS and the DRA to identify where our students are and to help measure growth, and we'll be doing the same with the SRI as we implement it this year. And again, as you've heard from a lot of our award winners this evening, and you've heard from each of the departments, we truly commit to every child, every day, whatever it takes. And I hope that you see from this presentation that our instruction is no longer one-size-fits-all. It's very focused on the idea that we have to learn the needs of each child and use our resources to meet those needs.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy.
You're welcome.
Questions from board members? Ms. Henry?
That SOL test is going to be a lot, the writing test is going to be a lot more difficult. It's a lot more difficult to be given a passage and say, "Edit this," than to be asked, "Does this need a comma or does this need a capital letter?"
Well, they won't be editing the entire passage, which you're absolutely right. The rigor is going to be intensive. As a matter of fact, what will happen is they'll be given a passage, and then they'll be given a part of it, a sentence or two sentences. And in it, there will be errors, and then they will be given multiple, for example, let's say it's punctuation, multiple forms of punctuation, and then asked, "Which ones go where?" And so the number of permutations on the options of how many different places they could go within the sentences is almost limitless, and they have to get them all correct in order to get that one right.
It's also much more difficult in a limited-time prompt to write a persuasive or a narrative instead of just a straight expository essay.
Fortunately, it's untimed.
What in the world is a paired passage?
Paired passages. When you pair passages, you see them on the SAT all the time. When you see two different texts that maybe either share a common theme, a common topic, a common background. For example, two articles written from two different papers around a recent event. One article written condemning individuals who have been bombing embassies, and the other one written condemning an individual who made a video that allegedly, you know, instigated those. And the student has to evaluate, who are the audiences of those two different articles? What were the strategies and the stylistic features that the two different writers chose? They may have both included actual facts, but the bias that can be created by the way that you use those facts and the type of word choice and your syntax can be vastly different. And so the students will have to examine those two different texts and have to identify what's the common feature, and then what were the choices of the different authors made in order to accomplish the intended result. And that is the type of reading our students will need to be able to do. They need to be able to evaluate and judge and make decisions about text, not just look at a single text out of context.
Okay. Your staff resources are aimed at early intervention, which all the resource, research says we want to have kids to read on grade level by grade 3, and then life is good. But we know we have a number of children who are headed into secondary school, and they are struggling, struggling still with reading. I see nine teacher specialists in secondary. There are 10 secondary schools, not counting the multi-level schools. Read 180 is for any student? Is Voyager for any student, or is that, it's not exclusively aimed at special needs students?
Right. Voyager is intended for your Tier 3 students.
Right. And that's a web-based program?
There's a computer aspect, and there's a classroom aspect. And if you're talking about the Read 180, same thing. There's a software piece, there's a guided reading component. Actually, it has small-group and whole-group instruction, and the teacher works guided reading with different groups, and then students are also on software, and they're doing independent reading.
Is there any ability for students or parents to access those materials for extra support at home? Because we have many, many parents who would do, move heaven and earth to help their children at home if they had those, those resources.
At this time, I don't know of any of our students that are using the Read 180 at home. Those requests haven't come through me. Certainly something we can entertain or, you know, consider what the access would mean. The challenge is that you, they're server-based in order for the student to log on to. As a matter of fact, we're loading the SRI right now for our, for our baseline assessment, and we're having to do it through each of the school servers. So even though it is internet-based, we have to have a server connection in order to do that. But those classroom teachers are trained in providing additional support, and there are other internet resources that are recommended to those students. And using the Lexile information, they make recommendations for appropriate text reading at home, as well as strategies to help the parents at home to help their children, because a lot of parents don't know how to help their children with literacy at home.
So the 180 is an elective period that students have access to through, say, 6th through 12th?
Correct.
And the Voyager might be through a stu-
Also an elective.
An elective or part of studies?
Study skills, embedded within a study skills, could be. Each, each school has the flexibility of choosing, depending on how many students need it, when it needs to be offered in the day. They work very hard to make sure that they can pair staff with the students, so that it's not only offered one time, and then luck of the draw, if you get it, you get it; if you don't, you don't. They don't work that way. So each school has to be a little more creative to make sure that it's available to the students who need it. A large number of our Tier 3 students, by the time you get into the secondary grades, do happen to receive that additional special education support, but it's not exclusive. So if there are students who are just regular education students who need that more intensive support, the Read Well, the Language Program, both of those work on language acquisition and decoding skills, whereas the Read 180 picks up after you've built those basic decoding skills and takes you into fluency and comprehension. And so the students who need that foundation level would be targeted for the Voyager program before the Read 180 program. But it is available to any student who's screened and identified. Now that we're using SRI for every single child 6th through 12th, all 10,000 children will have access to it and will know their Lexiles. It will help to make sure there are no students slipping through the cracks.
Thank you very much. Questions from other board members?
I have a quick question, and if you said, you mentioned this in your presentation, then forgive me. You were saying so much, I was trying to write stuff down. The Word Study program for Grade 2?
Yes.
What is that?
It's actually K through 2, and actually, Word Study can go all the way up to high school. Word Study is a differentiated approach to building recognition of letter, sound, up through words. And when you start with an emergent reader, for example, in kindergarten, they don't have that concept of what a letter is and the sound associated with it. Just teaching them the alphabet song that we love in order makes it so that a lot of children think that L and O P is one letter.
Yeah.
And if you only ever show them the letters in order, then they can only tell you what a C is if they see it in between A, B, and D, E. So instead, you teach the students the letter independent for themselves, and then you, they study the letter compared to other letters that might be similar. And they do activities to teach them the sound that goes with the actual symbol, so that they develop that letter concept or concept of letter. Then they build, as a beginning reader, they build into that concept of word, where they're putting the letters together. Just recognizing words by sight is great until you come across a word you've never seen before. Just doing phonics makes you a great word caller, or it makes you a good decoder, but it doesn't help you to understand why sounds make the sounds that they do, or why they work in partnership with other letters. And what happens is kids who just learn phonics tend to have trouble with spelling, because they don't understand the patterns or the sequences. So what Word Study does is it takes the best of word recognition, it takes the best of learning the letters and comparing them to other letters, and then same with different words, and it takes phonics, and it puts them together and helps the students so that they can be better readers, better spellers, better writers. In order to do that, you have to make sure you're addressing the student at their level. So in a 2nd grade classroom, you may have children who are still trying to learn that letter recognition, and others who are already on to more complex words. And as you go up in level, by stage of reader and by grade level, you get into more complex. So students in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade will probably be working on polysyllabic words, whereas in K-1 and 2, they're working on the, the actual sound of individual letters, and then building into words themselves. It's a differentiated approach. You lose that one-size-fits-all spelling list, and you individualize the lists. So student practice at home, everybody in the class is no longer learning the letter M. It's now this set of children over here, they're learning B and D, and this group over here, they're learning this other set. And so different children are progressing at their level. It doesn't slow a child down and hold them up. What it does is it holds them accountable to learning the foundation pieces before moving on to the next ones, because if they don't solidify those foundation pieces, that's when you run into horrible spellers and challenged readers at the upper grades. You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Hardy.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Johnson?
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Dietz to start moving toward the podium as I pull up her presentation. Ms. Dietz is the curriculum leader for Social Studies. You met her at our last meeting, because she's also our project manager for the School Net, but tonight, she's representing her department as the leader for the social sciences. Ms. Dietz?
Good evening. Chairman Mugler, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the board, Dr. Shifflit, parents, staff, teachers. I'm Alma Dietz, the Social Studies Curriculum Leader, and I have the distinct pleasure of sharing my update for our Social Studies instructional program. I am representing my very capable team, that includes Chuck Baumgartner, my elementary teacher specialist, Beth Leatherwood, my secondary teacher specialist, Kimberly Weaver, our curriculum integration technology teacher, Michaela York, my administrative support Our success plan for Social Studies is founded on four very basic tenets. The first is to build capacity for effective instruction and intervention. We work alongside with teachers to ensure that they have an arsenal of instructional strategies at, available, so that they can reach out to students and reach them at whatever level that they are and take them where they need to be and beyond. The next thing is to continuously monitor our student academic progress. We do this in a variety of ways, and I'm going to explain that in a little bit further in my presentation. The next is to increase the rigor of our common assessments to match the heightened rigor of the SOL tests. The VDOE is constantly raising the bar on what they want our students to know and to be able to do on the SOL tests, and that is one of our tasks, to make sure that we provide for our students practice and assessment, so that when they get to the SOL test, it is not their first encounter with that difficult item. The next thing is very important, and that is the continued emphasis of those strategies that have been, that we know from research, that have been proven to work and have worked for us over the years. Of course, we want to build on those strategies. These strategies that I just mentioned are SQ3R. These were all selected for their ability to impact reading, geography, history, and civics. These are the things that our students traditionally struggle with, mostly on the SOL test. So we really want to focus on those. SQ3Rs, we selected it because it attacks reading, specifically informational text. Informational text is what most of the textbooks in school are written on. They teach students facts and information. Making our students, giving our students strategies for attacking informational text is going to lead them to success on standardized tests and later on in their advanced schooling and in college. So we, we focus on that specifically. The next thing is visual mapping, which addresses geography. Visual mapping allows our students to have a mental picture of where continents, oceans, physical features are in relation to one another in the world. And as we all know, the SOL tests have a lot of maps on them, and this gives our students an upper hand in that, in that arena. The next one is chronology links, because it attacks history. A lot of our social studies test is based on- A lot of our Social Studies test is based on facts, knowing what events preceded one which came after another. This allows our students to be able to have an idea of cause and effect relationships, to be able to sequence historical events, and it gives them an advantage on the SOL test. They have that in their head, so that they know that, that the Revolutionary War preceded the Civil War, because a lot of times, our students struggle with that if they don't have that mental framework. The next one you've probably heard about was Project Citizen, and you saw me booing, booing over there on the sideline, because Project Citizen is, are, it's embedded in the Grade 8 curriculum. That is what Cheryl McLaughlin was speaking about. We've put it in the, in the Grade 8 curriculum because it allows students to use their knowledge of government and how, how it works, and not just to memorize facts, but to be able to use that information, to be able to research a problem such as homelessness in their community, and to be able to use problem-solving ability to propose a solution. And that is exactly what Ms. McLaughlin's class did. They, it was special ed students that came up with a, a wonderful solution. They worked together, and it just brought tears, tears to my eyes and made my heart, you know, brim, because that's what civics is all about. It's making our students become engaged citizens, and to make this world a better place in which they found it. We also have embedded, something that is new, is our Virginia Rules Project. Excuse me, and it's, it's, right now, it's embedded in our civics curriculum. It's something that is, that is new. It teaches our students about, gives them an idea of the Virginia Court system as it relates to teens. So hopefully, that'll keep our, our young students and, out of the juvenile system, and to dissuade them from joining gangs. So that is something that we, that we embedded in the curriculum this year. There are six lessons that will be taught along, in conjunction with our, our resource officers, our school resource officers in middle school, and that will be rolled out in the third nine weeks. So we're really looking forward to that. The next thing, the goal of our, our department is to create an aligned and accessible curriculum, and that is what we do, what we really focus on. Our K through 12 curriculum, Social Studies curriculum, is fully aligned with the Social Studies standards of learning. Our standards changed in 2008, so we've had quite a bit of time to make sure that, that we've aligned the curriculum, that we've loaded, just about three-quarters of the resources for K through 12 are loaded on SchoolNet. Then also, we've, as I said, the resources are easily accessible for teachers around the clock, 24/7, and they really enjoy having that, to be able to have everything linked together that they need to be able to teach a unit. Then, the other way that we make the curriculum accessible to teachers is that the SchoolNet has an interactive lesson planner component. So teachers can write lesson plans, and they can also schedule it on SchoolNet, so that they can share it, not just at their building level, but also with the division. So we have those very best lessons available to all teachers, and we're really excited about that. Another important duty of our department is to create Common Assessments. With Interactive Achievement, it has facilitated our online deployment of our Common Assessments. We have all of our K, well, I would, I should say, Grade 3 through 12 assessments, 11 assessments loaded on there. And we're going to get immediate data results, and I think that is the, that's the true beauty of that. K through 12, we've created pre- and post-assessments that are going to measure students, what they know when they begin the school year, and then, as a teacher teaches the content at the end of the school year, they're going to take a post-assessment, and that'll measure, accurately measure their growth over time. Those also have been posted on Interactive Achievement and SchoolNet. Our department has also created some K through 12 Power Quiz Common Assessments, and those are designed to help. They're short, there may be like 10 to 12 questions, and so that a teacher teaches a unit in Social Studies, and then they give those assessments. It helps the teacher to gauge a student's progress along the way. That way, they can make those mid-course corrections before the SOL test. Another thing that we have is the student component, student learning logs, so that students can set their own academic goals. A student would take an assessment, get their score back, and then they would, maybe, perhaps if a student got a 60%, they would set a goal to improve that score. And then, the powerful thing about that is that a student would devise a plan and figure out, what am I going to do? How am I going to get my grade up? And use some of the, maybe some of the Power Quiz things, some, some of the parent review cards, some of the things that we have selected, but it puts ownership on the student for their learning, and that's a very powerful thing. Finally, building capacity for effective instruction. We have been partnering with collaborative learning teams to make sure that we build capacity for effective instruction at the classroom level. We meet with teachers very regularly, at least once a week, to sit down and discuss the data with them. We have, we've scheduled just-in-time workshops by grade level, and we focus on those needs that have been identified as, as things they need to work on. This allows our teachers to get exactly what they need and when they need it. We've also created interactive SOL review kits, so that when we, that this will help with differentiated instruction. So if a student needs assistance in a certain SOL, they can go ahead and do small group with those kits. And what the teachers and really like about it is that it has the answers on there as well, so anybody can come in and help with a student and be able to do that one-on-one. Finally, we always want to remember that our parents are a great ally to us, and we've created SOL Parent Review Cards. We have those right now for grades 2 through 8, and our goal this year is to create them for high school, because our, those are cards that, that parents can work with at home with their students, and it has the answers on them. And that's always helpful. Monitoring progress, we regularly conduct instructional walkthroughs. We have a schedule, so that we stick to that, and we monitor how teachers are doing, how students are doing, because we want to keep our finger on the pulse of what is going on. We have online benchmark assessments that I discussed on, on Interactive Achievement, and this allows us to see how our students are doing. Finally, we conduct benchmark data meetings. Those are set up with our schools to make sure that we sit in with our teachers to look at the data and to come up, up with a plan for improvement. Every day, every child, whatever it takes, that is our commitment.
Thank you, Mrs. Dietz.
Thank you.
Questions from board members? Mrs. Phillips?
I just have a quick question. SOL Parent Review Cards, how do you get your hands on those?
Those, we've just made copies of those, and we give them to our, our teachers, and they pass them out. We suggested that if they can pass them out, maybe at back-to-school night. We do it in one, nine-week intervals, so that they get a, a set for the first nine weeks, a set for the second nine weeks. So those should be in the schools right now. Now, for high school, we're creating those.
So you should ask your child if they have some SOL Review Cards.
Yes, yes, and I'll, and then ask me, because I will make sure-
Thank you.
-that they are not in, in the building.
Yeah, I haven't seen mine. But I'll be asking.
Okay, what grade?
8.
Okay, I'll make sure that they're in the building.
I might have a spare set of those cards.
Yes.
Anything else, Ms. Phillips?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just want to applaud you for that parent piece, because that's a big part that sometimes gets overlooked, and that, that help is so great. I did have one question, one thing that my children often stumble with, with Social Studies, is the writing piece. Is there, you know, they have to write a lot of essays and things like that. Do you have parts of your curriculum that are aimed towards helping them with that?
Yes, we do. We're doing workshops for our teachers to help them with that, to, to make sure that they know, we've done SQ3R workshops, and part of that is a writing piece. We're offering those this, throughout the year. We did one at the beginning of the year, and we're going to be offering some more around December timeframe.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mrs. Dietz.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
That concludes updates from curriculum and instruction, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Shiflett to introduce the next report.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy, Ms. Dietz. I certainly appreciate the work that you're doing in both of your core content areas, and look forward to great results from the, the structures and models that you've put in place. So thank you. Tonight, Dr. Cooper will provide an update on accreditation.
Good evening, thank you. They've given me a piece of fancy technology here, so I hope we can move forward with this. Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board and the community, I'm pleased to be here with you tonight just to share our results and accreditation status for all of our schools based on our last year's test results. Before we go into the actual results, since there are so many different measures in play and in the papers, I thought I'd do a quick review of what we're actually talking about here. Accreditation is awarded by the state of Virginia, and it's based on SOL performance in the four core areas. In high schools, it also includes a measure of cohort graduation and complete, completion called a Cohort Graduation and Completion Index. And so each of the benchmarks for different grade levels are listed here, and I know you're all familiar with those. Based on your results on SOL tests, your pass rates at all the different grade levels, and your graduation index standards, you can make one of four ratings. You are either fully accredited, and you miss meet all of them. For high schools that meet all of the SOL tests but have a grad, graduation and completion index that's lower than 85 yet greater than 81, they receive a provisional accreditation while the state phases in that full 85 measure. You can also be accredited with warning. If you miss any of the targets at all, even by a single point, you are accredited with warning, and then if you are accredited with warning for several years in a row, the state can take accreditation from you and deny it entirely. You want to avoid that. Our accreditation results are a little different than you've seen in the past. The good news is, is that we have 24 of 30 schools fully accredited. The not-so-good news is that we have 24 of 30 schools fully accredited. This is a very different number for us. We have six schools that are accredited with warning, four of them are in a single subject, and two of them have two target areas that they need to improve in. You can see that math played a part in five of the six accredited warning statuses, and English played a part in three of them. The good news is, is that no one is on the verge of having their accreditation denied. This is a new rating for most of these schools. Although these numbers are really different for us, I wanted to remind both the board and the public that it's different, it's not dire. 80% of our schools are fully accredited. Of the schools that did not make full accreditation, that are accredited with warning, they made five of six of those target areas, or they made four of six. You can see where the warnings are. We have 13% of our schools who are warned in a single subject. Math, you heard a lot about the assessments across the state. Math played a part in the results at Machen and Andrews and Hampton. Carey is warned in English alone, and then we do have two schools that are warned in both English and math, and one of those schools missed the marks by a single percentage point in both areas. So again, these results are very different for us, but it's, there is work to be done, but it's not a dire situation, and I do want us to be able to celebrate some successes as well, not just to focus on the areas that we need to grow. We do have some good news. 100% every school met or exceeded the state's targets in science. You heard Mr. McDonald talk about the work that's going on in the Science Department to scale that up even more, and, and the things we're doing in science are working. There are some very impressive scores. 100% of schools met or exceeded the state's targets in history and the social sciences, and you've just heard what we're doing tonight to, to scale that up even further. We have all of our middle schools accredited, every one of them, and every one of our high schools actually exceeded the graduation and completion target. As a school district who had a school, one of our high schools listed on a list of graduate, or dropout factories several years ago, that particular school now leads the division and has a graduation and completion index of 94. So we do have some impressive results, while we do have some areas for growth. He's such a gentleman, thank you. The last thing that I wanted to leave you with tonight was that this division uses data to make decisions about what to do, and so I wanted to offer some review, really, of, of things that you've already heard about. We got these results, they start coming in, and we start downloading them off of Pearson Access in June. The minute tests are finished, we begin to take those results, and we aggregate them almost on a daily basis. They go to curriculum leads, they go to division leadership team, and those people began work immediately. You heard Mrs. Holmes say that we actually started professional development on June 18th, that was the Monday after school ended. So I just wanted to remind the, the board and the public of some things, the key components of success planning that we have in store, and really already in the works. The, Dr. Cagiano shared with you that for our Title I schools, and, and five of our schools who are accredited with warning are Title I schools, they had already reworked the approach to support for those schools, to broaden support for teachers with coaches, and to broaden support for students with interventionists. You heard tonight from Mrs. Hardy about the collaborative work that's going on with reading intervention. The mathematics department, we heard from Carolyn Holmes, a very broad plan to really grow the expertise of our teachers to deliver very effective instruction in light of very challenging assessments, the technology-enhanced assessments through folks for a loop. And we have a group of teachers that began working on that the week, the Monday after school start, uh, school ended this last year. They have a lot of initiatives. You heard reference to the online curricula tonight in virtually every area and the online assessments. Those, those apply to every, every one of our core content areas. Online resources, I think we've heard enough about. And then, Dr. Cagiano recently shared with us the growth of our professional learning communities. I always want to say Performance Learning Center, because that's the other PLC, but really, the collaborative work between teachers and among content groups to be able to capitalize on our most effective instructional techniques and our most successful ways of delivering instruction and reinforcing and offering support to students. And as I've worked in some training recently, I've heard first-year teachers share with their colleagues about what they're learning and how great their jobs are because of the work in those content learning teams, the CLTs that you hear a lot about. You heard tonight about graduated initiatives for, for a pyramid of interventions, a response to intervention approach, where we have not just broad initiatives for Tier 1 instruction, but we have a plan in place for kids who need support at that second level, and then even beyond at the third level. So I think the bottom line that we'd like you to take away from this report is that these numbers are different from us, but we are already well underway- these numbers are different from us, but we are already well underway in plans to improve those results and offer support to areas where we need to grow. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Questions from the board? Thank you so much. Dr. Shiflett?
Our last report this evening is our monthly business operations and financial update. Dr. Hellman?
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, School Board members. My comments will be brief tonight. In your agenda, we have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances for the period ending August 31. You can see that we have received revenues totaling $16,957,226, and we have expenditures and encumbrances totaling $13,96,273. And we show you by the various categories where those expenditures and encumbrances have been made. This is pretty, pretty much on track right now for this early in the school year. I would like to mention, though, that our fall membership will be coming out very, very soon. That's the first indicator that we will have in terms of what our budget numbers will look like with the March ADM. And you will recall that the current year budget is based on 20,700 students. The technology department right now is, is working, getting the numbers together and going through and cleansing the data and looking to see where we're at. Once we get those final numbers somewhere around mid-October, we can then begin to start making some projections in terms of what we're looking at for our March ADM. And then if we need to make any kind of mid-course correction or anything along those lines, we'll certainly clue you, clue you in and let you know as soon as we know. That concludes my comments. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hellman. Mrs. Henry?
I think you anticipated my question. I was going to ask you about 10-day count, but isn't it about this week they're cleaning it up and we should have? The 10-day count is still the predictor for the March ADM, or they had gone away from 10-day to end of the month?
It's, it's no longer the 10-day count. We, we look at the 10-day count, but basically it's the fall membership, and we have historical data that correlates fall membership, which is the last day of September, to the March ADM. And so that's what we utilize to make our projections.
Does the 10-day count look about what you expected, or?
Right now, it's a little, it's a little short. We're a little low, but we're not ready to, you know, pull.
Not the September, end of September.
Right.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Thank you so much, Dr. Hellman. Dr. Shiflett?
That concludes our report. Thank you.
We move on now to the hearing of delegations or presentation of any written communications. And I have several that have signed up to speak. Speakers are reminded to limit your comments to a maximum of five minutes in accordance with School Board Policy BDDH. We start with Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Shiflett, and Mr. Boo. My name is David Dietrich. Live at 139 Wilderness Road in Hampton. Like to start with saying, Mr. Bowers was a fine gentleman, and he will be sorely missed. I'm here tonight to talk about school board policy, in particular, community engagement and school choice. I'm going to assume, Mrs. Mugler, that you are the voice of the board, and I will direct my comments to you. I, I continue to be disappointed in the responses I am receiving from you as a representative of the school board, and I will give you a number of, of points in that regard. First of all, your rationale for inaction in response to my requests for action, saying that more time is needed. I'd like to know how much more time? How many more years will it take to change the nature of your policy? How much more drop in our world ranking will it take before you do something positive for our children? You say you're not paid enough for the job that you do here. How much do you need to be paid to be able to respond effectively to a concerned citizen? You say state laws and are directive of what you do at the school board. I contend that solutions come at the local level, and local school boards set that local policy. You say you're not able to act effectively because of resistance from other school board members. You had a quorum when you were elected as chairman. That means you have a majority on the board for major issues. You should be able to pass any policy that requires such change. You say there will be no blue-ribbon panel to address concerns of citizens. I, I'd like to know, you know, what, what your solution is in lieu of that. You make it clear that you have public meetings for appeasement purposes for, of citizens. I'm not interested in being appeased. I'm interested in making progress on what we're doing with the children. You say Hampton School Board is more open than most other school boards. If this is an open school board, and all we can do is, is stand up in front of you and, and have something to say, and that's all we can expect, that's not open, in my opinion. And finally, you say there will be no public discussion, nor will there be any private discussion. If questions are asked, you'll give a response, and that's the end of the matter. I, I think it can go a lot farther than that. Moving on to school choice, first of all, I'd like to say there's at least a glimmer of hope. I spoke with Mr. Haynes at Kitten Town High School, and he said AP test scores are, are up. That is promising. I'd like to see test scores like AP, SAT, ACT correlated with SOLs and performance in graduation, college, and in the workplace. I don't know if you're aware, but another movie just came out on school choice called Won't Back Down. I'd like to know what you think is the reason why these numbers of movies are coming out at this time, if we don't have any problems with our school system. Education is a civil rights issue of our time. Our youth are being relegated to second-class citizenship. Their opportunities will be limited if they're not prepared for life. I have evidence in interviewing local supermarket managers that they have seen a degradation in performance of cashiers' ability to do basic math, change, determining change for customers. That's a problem. You can help in many ways with this, with this issue or these issues, and, and I continue to get the impression that when it comes down to it as a school board, you're not really concerned with our children. I'm really, I'm interested in results, not excuses, and I'd like to see some action taken. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. You, you asked quite a few questions, and I'm not sure I can address all of those by memory from sitting here tonight, but I can tell you that I, I never, you, you can have a seat. I never, never made a comment that this school board or any school board member was not paid enough. That was never something that I, as an individual or a representative of this board, has ever said. I asked for your comments in regard to resistance from board members in regard to public discussions. We are in discussions of, of other options and alternatives, and we have to work through those things. These meetings are not for the appeasement of the public. These meetings are to carry out the business of this school division. So, at, at no point in time has that been told to you, that these meetings were, were simply an appeasement to our public. And as, as far as the movies that are being produced and, and put out into the public, I don't think there's anyone in this country that's going to tell you that there's not room for improvement in public education. So, that's, that's my response to you in, in regard to that. I'll have to review the video just to respond to your other questions. Our next speaker is Mrs. Mary Taylor.
My name is Mary Taylor. I live at 45 West Sunset Road, Hampton, Virginia. I have a set of questions tonight. You can either answer tonight or answer via email. Over 50% of the school board policies are out of compliance with state law. I'd like to know how you intend to rectify the situation? And does the board think that it should meet more often in order to rectify, just so that the school board is in compliance? I would like to know what duties as chairperson you are required to perform and what duties, if any, have been imposed by the board, and this is in accordance with school board policy. And, Mr. Kilgore, two years ago, you were writing a policy to provide equal access to deaf and hard-of-hearing students and citizens, and I would like to know what happened to that policy. 65% drop in the math scores for the deaf students in the SOLs, and over 16% in reading for the deaf students in the SOLs. And I would like to know what you intend to do to rectify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mrs. Taylor, just a point of clarification. What was the percentage you said, the, the policies?
I said over 50.
Next speaker will be Sherri Taylor.
Hello. My name is Sherri Taylor. I live at 45 West Sunset Road in Hampton, Virginia. My mother, on several occasions, has contacted this board to address issues with my son's classroom. You, the board, have determined the classroom, which is half the size of the state recommends and windowless, is an appropriate and safe and learning environment. My son's IEP placement is a deaf education classroom with direct ASL instruction. In an email to my mother, Superintendent Shiflett indicated that there are available options. Obviously, the moving of the class to an appropriate classroom or to another school which has an appropriate classroom are the only options possible, given that his IEP placement...
Madam Chair, this speaker is out of order. We are not allowed, under the policy, to discuss anything with respect to an individual student.
Then just talk about the deaf ed classroom. I am speaking about the deaf ed classroom, not my son's individual situation. I'm talking about his environment.
Ms. Reeves?
It's appropriate for them to continue. To the, to the extent that it's not about an individual student or an individual placement, perhaps, but your school board policy specifically addresses that they're not supposed to be talking about...
I'm not talking about an individual.
There's only two students in that classroom, so it's, but I...
Well, now, now who the student is, so what's the difference? She hasn't said the name of the teacher, where the class is, nothing. How would anyone gather where this, who this is? I'm just saying that the deaf education classroom, I didn't say my son's name, I didn't mention anything specific. And I think she's allowed to address her own son.
Exactly. You can't talk about us as an individual. She can talk about us as...
She can talk about him all day long.
The policy specifically states that you're not to bring up anything to do with an individual student or an individual employee.
I'm not talking about individual. I'm talking about the classroom my son is in. Not talking about my son.
It's specifically the classroom she...
We'll, we'll allow a comment specific to the classroom space.
Okay, so, eh, he's, sorry, just trying to catch up. The IEP placement is a deaf education classroom with direct ASL instruction.
Again, we're talking about an IEP placement for an individual child, and that is against the school board policy.
No names were given. It's not an individual.
Wait, make up your mind. First, it's a name, now it's because it's a classroom?
How in the hell are you supposed to bring up an issue if you can't even talk about it? You, you don't have to talk about it. She can talk about it. It's her concern.
Officer.
You don't know your business. As a lawyer, I cannot believe that.
That's why the school board is out of compliance. I think I'm just going to go because no one wants to discuss this issue. Anyhow, what options are available? You said there are options. What options are there, Shiflett?
We move now to our next speaker, Mrs., Ms. Nancy Pollak.
I'm Nancy Pollak, 12171 Old Suffolk Road, Windsor, Virginia. Changes have occurred since new school board members have ascended to the throne. One of the changes is that the goal of, of every child, every day, whatever it takes, has now been downgraded to a motto. Instead of choosing to live up to the principle established by earlier leaders, you choose to devalue it. Despite the awards given tonight, every child, every day, no matter what it takes, is not viable and thriving in Hampton City Schools. Allowing a class of special-needs students to be taught in a small, windowless closet is indefensible. To deprive these children of the chance to watch the rain, enjoy the sun, and the world outside is not equal-appropriate education. But maybe that's just a motto, too. Every child, every day, whatever it takes. A mind is a terrible thing to waste, does not just apply to the African-American community. But again, another motto. To give up on students is not an option, yet clearly that has occurred. Hampton City School Board has decided that these children, deaf, blind, mentally or physically challenged, have minimal value. They will probably not be football quarterbacks or homecoming queens. Not worth your time and energy. Stephen Hawking, significantly physically handicapped, but I'm going to go out on a limb here and say he's probably more intelligent than 99.9% of us in this room. Helen Keller was deaf and blind, but was able to make a significant impact on educational techniques, an intelligent, productive member of society. Even Stevie Wonder and Ray Charles are both blind, but they've managed to eke out a living. Beethoven was deaf when he produced some of his more challenging compositions. Albert Einstein was autistic, but he managed to discover and prove that E equals MC squared. Someone saw a chance for these citizens with special needs and didn't give up. Thankfully, they were not under the auspices of Hampton City School Board. Stop concentrating on thwarting the Taylor family's efforts to obtain improved chances for these children. Work with them. Refocus on the educational opportunities these children deserve. None of us knows what they are capable of becoming. When I spoke of ascending to the throne earlier, obviously, that was sarcasm. Hopefully, you recognize that you are not royalty. You are elected public servants. You need to step up and serve the public. Every child, every day, whatever it takes.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak. We move now to our next speaker, Ms. Joanne Morse. Dr.?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Joanne Morse. I live at 121 Reflection Lane. We change the tone here. I actually came up to say thank you. I wanted to thank Dr. Shiflett publicly. Since I come to complain, I feel we should also come when we feel something is being done. I appreciate your emails, and I would like to make a suggestion. I had sent you an email earlier saying, giving you a link for the report. I had sent you an email earlier saying, giving you a link for the report. However, after I started looking at the report, I realized it's really a lot of work to get through there, to look for the one book and to find, because it's not all listed under one book, you have to keep looking back and forth. If it would be all right with you, I would like to create a summary by going through it myself and send you the summary, if that would work, on what we find in that report, on that particular book.
And are you specifically talking about the one book that we have?
Yeah, the one book.
And you're talking about the document that you had previously provided to us?
Well, what I provided was a summary. So, it really doesn't give you the details, the link...
Actually, we went to the website.
Oh, you did?
And it was a 200 and some page document.
Yes, that's a huge document.
That is a document that we looked at.
Oh, you did?
And that is a document that I responded in my email to you.
Would you ask?
So, we have done that.
Oh, you have done that.
And it's been shared with our curriculum leader.
Good.
And as you recall, in my letter to you, I referenced the process that you need to follow in order to lodge any kind of complaint or issue with the State Board of Education. Because that's their, this is, the books are books that are approved on the State Department's list of approved texts for social studies. And because of, they have a process set up where anyone who has any kind of issue with any portion of a textbook can go in and describe their particular concern about the textbook.
That's on the website.
Yes. And then it goes to their review committee. And so, that is the most appropriate way to address this.
All right. Well, we'll start there. We will go back and look at, we were already starting to work with the state, but we'll continue that.
Correct.
But I do want to thank you for your follow-ups. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. Our next speaker is Ms. Greta Harris.
It's strange to be on this side of the speaking situation. Madam Chair, esteemed school board, and Dr. Shiplett, and I do mean esteemed school board. At our June retreat, Hampton Special Education Advisory Committee decided to speak to the school board monthly to help spread disability awareness. Each month, a CAC member will address a different disability. On September 28, 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed a resolution declaring October National Down Syndrome Month. Therefore, I'm speaking about Down Syndrome to you tonight. The term Down Syndrome officially replaced the accepted terms of imbeciles, mongoloids, and idiots in 1965. John Landon Down was a revered British physician who researched and discovered the traits associated with Down Syndrome in 1866. He also discovered five other developmental disabilities and championed the role of women in medicine. Down Syndrome is a chromosomal condition caused by the presence of all or part of a third copy of the 21st chromosome. Thus, the other name you may hear, trisomy 21, discovered by Dr. Lejeune in 1959. Typical characteristics can include intellectual disability in the mild to moderate range, delay in physical growth, low muscle tone, and particular facial characteristics such as flat nasal bridge, skin folds of the inner eye, and protruding tongue due to smaller oral cavity. There are many generalizations about Down Syndrome. Let me address some, including statistics from the Global Down Syndrome Foundation and many other sources. People who have Down Syndrome die young. The average US life expectancy for people with Down Syndrome has risen to over 50 years old. Sadly, the average life expectancy for an African American in the US with Down Syndrome is just 35 years old. That deserves attention by our government and scientific community. People with Down Syndrome cannot read or write. The majority of children with Down Syndrome can learn to read and write. Research shows that teaching is most effective when teachers are well-trained, have high expectations of their students, and students' progress is formally evaluated. Students included with typical peers have the best academic outcomes. Number three, people with Down Syndrome can't go to regular public schools. IDEA stipulates that all children with disabilities must have available to them a free, appropriate public education that meets their unique needs and prepares them for further education, employment, and independent living. Studies show that including students with disabilities in the classroom improves the academic progress of students without disabilities. Number four, people with Down Syndrome all look alike. People with Down Syndrome share some common features, but they look more like their families than each other. Number five, all people with Down Syndrome are overweight. Not all people with Down Syndrome are overweight. But there is a relationship between Down Syndrome and obesity that is being studied. Research suggests that thyroid issues and a lower metabolic rate contribute to obesity. Proper diet and exercise are very important. Number six, all people who have Down Syndrome will develop Alzheimer's disease. Numerous studies have shown that virtually 100% of people with Down Syndrome will have the plaques and tangles in the brain associated with Alzheimer's disease, but not necessarily the actual symptomatic disease. One study indicates that 20 to 55% of adults will develop symptomatic Alzheimer's. There's exciting research being done right now to find out why some adults do not have symptomatic Alzheimer's. There's much, excuse me, there's much buzz in the medical community that this research can lead to a cure for all of us, and I mean all of us, in our lifetime. Number seven, people with Down Syndrome are always happy. People with Down Syndrome have feelings and moods just like everyone else. There's actually research that shows depression is undertreated in people with Down Syndrome. It is important for them to have educational work and social opportunities as well as adaptive life skills. People with Down Syndrome cannot live independently or get jobs. An increasing number of adults with Down Syndrome in the US are living independently with limited assistance from family or the state. A small percentage are able to live entirely independent lives. Today, some students in the US graduate from high school and go to college. A 2012 Towson University study shows that people with Down Syndrome have excellent computer skills in the workplace when allowed to take computer classes in middle and high school. We know that people with Down Syndrome can be excellent employees, and some employers have reported higher satisfaction level among all employed workers when their coworkers have Down Syndrome. Number nine, babies with Down Syndrome are aborted at a high rate. This is true. In the US, almost 95% of babies diagnosed prenatally with Down Syndrome are aborted. Hopefully, one day prenatal testing will be seen as a blessing that offers parents time for preparation and further education. Greater disability awareness is also key to alleviate parental fears and misconceptions. The media is helping increase awareness of acceptance with Down Syndrome. Look at shows such as Glee and now too many movies Stephen mentioned. A friend of mine named Gail Williamson in Los Angeles is a talent agent and acting coach. She's behind almost every role that you now see that has any disability. She has made that her mission, and has started with her son Blair, who's in his 30s, and he's a famous actor with Down Syndrome. The future is bright. Our students can now grow up to be actors, models, artists, poets, athletes, entrepreneurs, computer data entry technicians. The world is limitless. Thank you for your time. And I made it.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. That concludes the forms that I have for speakers tonight. Ms. Barr, were there any others? We move on to other items for action. Our action agenda includes items 6.01 through 6.08. Are there any action items members would like to further discuss?
6.08.
Okay, then we will... I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, I move that we vote as a block on action items 6.01 through 6.07.
It has been moved and seconded that we vote on item 6.01 through 6.07 as a block. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Barr, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move now to item 6.08, Revision of School Board Policy KG, Community Use of Facilities. Mrs. Smith, you had like to address this particular policy?
Yes, please. Just one comment before we move forward, because we had a long discussion at the work session last meeting about school activities versus community use. And we had all agreed with the community use, that this applied and went well. And I just read that one sentence in the third paragraph, the second sentence says, "First are groups associated directly with schools, such as PTAs, school booster clubs, school alumni associations, school business partners, and school-sponsored activities." When I read the school-sponsored activities, the way I interpret that is basically, you know, club activities and that type of thing. When I talked to our school board attorney, she said, "No, that school activities are separate from school-sponsored." And if that's the meaning of that, I'm good with that. But I just want to make sure that we're not pulling school activities into this community use policy, is all.
Any other comments to this policy?
Okay. Third paragraph, I'm trying to...
Third paragraph, the second sentence.
It starts with, the paragraph starts with public interest groups.
Gotcha. Thank you.
On page one of the policy.
Right. Correct.
We managed to confuse ourselves with this overly, overly every time. But this is entitled Community Use of School Facilities, and so I'm wondering why school-sponsored activities... Okay, I understand, it could be a play by some other group, a community theater group that the school is sponsoring. Okay. My theory is that if it's a PTA thing, it's usually joint-sponsored by PTA and the school, and so it wouldn't fall under this. So, if it were sponsored by the school, even though it involved another group, it wouldn't fall under this, correct? I mean, if, as the principal of the building, you arrange something, it's still a school-sponsored activity.
Ms. Reeves, would you care to comment on this for us?
Well, my understanding is, when it was rewritten, the, I was not involved in the rewriting. But the suggestions, and in fact, from one of your fellow board members, I have a 2010 email where specifically he had suggested that establishing the three categories, public interest groups, from an adjacent jurisdiction's school board policy would seem prudent. And that was York County. And York County uses that specific language. School-sponsored activities, meaning that it's not school activities, but they are school-sponsored. So, it is different. And that it was very important, at that time, when you all were developing this policy, to make certain that you laid out what each one of the three categories were.
In that case, Madam Chairman...
Does that satisfy your question?
I think so. I just want to make sure it's not a real gray area where it's confusing of what's school-sponsored versus a school activity. That's all. I don't know why that phrase has to be in there, why, you know, just that one, school-sponsored activity, why it needs to be listed. But I can agree with the board on whatever the consensus is.
Would be happy to entertain a motion at this time.
I just hit the wrong screen.
Approve, approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Harper and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we approve Policy KG. Or is there any discussion? Shall I say any further discussion? If not, Ms. Barr, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move now to deliberation, which includes items 7.01 through 7.24. Are there any deliberation items that board members would like to pull for discussion or further clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Henry?
I've got to figure out, there's so many, I'm losing my track. But BJA, which is Membership in Organizations, and...
BJA, I'm showing his liaison.
Is 7.20 and 7.18. I had a couple of questions about that one as well, and not the rest.
Okay. I'm showing 7.20 as Liaison with School Boards Association.
Yes, but it has to discuss his membership in organizations.
Okay. Any others, any other deliberation items that board members would like to pull for further discussion or clarification? Okay, this time I would entertain a motion.
No, it, too, we did...
I'm sorry.
The breach?
I'm just ready to move. I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
Okay. So, this time we'll take up item 7.18, Revision of School Board Policy, BDDG.
Okay. My only point on this was that it says minutes are also available on the Hampton City Schools' website, but it does not mention Board Docs, and I thought it ought to do that. Because that's where they're available, is in Board Docs. Or, and you can access Board Docs website independently of the Hampton City Schools' website as well. So, it's kind of, you can, minutes are available on the Hampton City Schools' website through Board Docs or through Board Docs independently. But I think Board Docs ought to be mentioned.
You can access Board Docs independently, you don't have to go through the City Schools' website.
No. You can sign on to...
You see URL.
Use their URL address.
But I just wonder, I mean, we could move to another...
Right.
...system, so...
But I, I think you ought to say through the board computer information system or something that says, that implies that we have, you can't just look on the website and say, "School Board Minutes," I guess. I guess you can, but it's not, it's not a function of the website, it's a function of this program that we use, administrative program.
But if you go right on this website, well, it takes you, it says minutes right on the website.
Right.
That you click on, and then it comes up Hampton City Schools and her public site.
But I think, I think it would...
It doesn't say Board Docs on the website.
Right. If the point of this is to say that we have minutes and we have things that are available to the public, do we have another policy that says information and agendas are available to the public through Board Docs? Or through an information system? Anyway, it's my suggestion that we kind of look at the wording of that between now and the next time.
I believe that there are other places where we mention that certain forms...
The agendas are available and so forth.
Those sorts of things are on our website. And the reason that we have to tell where the minutes are is because statutorily, you have to have them available to the public, and this is the manner in which we do.
But to Ms. Henry's point, if there is, and I wasn't aware, but if there's a method of accessing Board Docs separate from going through the Hampton City Schools' website, that's probably worth mentioning. It's just that much more transparency.
I mean, that's how I go. I don't, I don't, I have no idea.
Clearly, when you go to the website, you can, you can get to the minutes, but I wasn't aware you could actually go separate of the website to get to the minutes.
No, that's the only way I go to Board Docs is...
Interesting.
I have their address listed as a site on my bookmarks, and that's how I go. I don't go through Hampton City Schools.
We need care. Anyway, just... Ms. Reeves, could you, could you look into that wording?
It's nothing we have to discuss.
Correct. But, and I'm asking, you all want to specifically mention something like Board Docs, even though that might not be a system that you keep?
Well, you could mention that we have an electronic administrative system that provides the public and the board information about the board. I don't know. I just think when you look up a policy, everything you need to know ought to be kind of clear without having to cross-reference the eight other things that are cross-referenced. It was just a point, and I'm not going to have any heartburn one way or the other.
I see the point that Ms. Reeves is trying to make, that...
Right.
You know, we would have to continue to go back and revise this policy periodically if... That's if you call it Board Docs.
That's if you call it Board Docs.
But if you say...
There's a generalized method of getting to the minutes.
You can also get to it if our website is down. You can still get to it.
If we're satisfying a future application.
Well, I guess, I guess that's... I'm happy to add what, what your pleasure is. But my point is, even if it were, and I, and I would have to yield to Carolyn because I have not had the Board Docs training. But if you're going to specifically say it's available on an independent site and want to cite it, you're going to have to cite Board Docs. So you're going to have to change it if we change our system. And we're going to have to remember to change that. Because then, as soon as you change our system, it will not be correct.
Okay. I'm good. Just brought it up. It's all right.
You gotta put BoardDocs.com.VSBA.Hampton.Bores. If you just go to plain old Board Docs, it doesn't take you. You gotta have all that other information go along with it.
And like, and like you had said, right on the homepage, it says minutes. So it's very simple from the website.
Yeah, but you can get it. It's not difficult.
You'd have to drill down.
Anyway, it's all right. It was just a question, guys.
Okay. Thank you for your question, Mrs. Henry.
Okay, my other question has to do with BJA. And again, it's something that if you read it, it doesn't necessarily make sense to me. Says Hampton City School Board will be a member of the Virginia School Board Association and the National School Board Associations. And in fact, it is as a body, and therefore, we are as individuals. And then it says, "Membership dues in professional organizations will not be paid for from public funds." That, that sounds like that those memberships will not be paid for by public funds, and that is not the case. So I think you probably ought to say, "Membership dues in other professional organizations will not be paid from public funds." Because public funds, in fact, pay for this board's collective membership in those two organizations. So it sounds like they're contradictory.
Ms. Reeves, could you handle that change for us?
Okay. And, and so I'm understanding, your membership in both VSBA and NSBA is a group membership that includes each one of you individually. None of that is an individual membership. So the import of the policy is that, that you, your current policy reads that you are not going to pay for individual memberships in any other professional organization. And because you already have your memberships in these two places, but you don't have them as individuals. So you're, you're now precluded from individually being a member of any organization. I'm not sure how "other" assists because you're not an individual member of VSBA or NSBA. You're a membership, your membership in each one of those is by virtue of being a group, a member of your group.
But if you just read it, you just read from the beginning to end, it sounds like our membership can, will not be paid for by public funds, and it is paid for by public funds.
I think it just further clarifies it and helps understanding for those that might not know that it's group membership.
Last three words is what I guess she's...
For individual members.
You want to take the individual members out?
Well, let's put the "for individual members" and put it up by the front. Membership dues for individual members in professional organizations. Then, then it clarifies it for, for me. Okay? Just put it, put that modifier you have up at the front, and then it doesn't seem to contradict what it just said.
I understand. Okay, so you want it to read, the second sentence will read, "Membership dues for individual members in professional organizations will not be paid from public funds," period.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
I just, I think sometimes when you just read things cold and straight through it, they don't always make sense. Usually, they're the ones from code that don't make sense that way. But that one didn't make sense to me either. Probably is from code.
That will be made.
Thank you. That uses up all my sticky notes.
Okay, we'll back up a little bit to 7.01. Thank you. Dr. Shiflett reminded me that we did have some Intellos ground lease matters to go over in 7.01 and 7.02. Would that be you, Dr. Hellman?
Madam Chair, yes, that would be me. Included in your packet tonight, we have a couple of leases and site plans for co-locations at two of our sites. And we'll review the Barron site first and then move on to the Mallory site. Mrs. Reeves and myself have been working with representatives from Intellos for several months now to get to the point that we're being, you know, we're prepared to present these to you. We've taken a few pictures just to try to give you some graphic representation and let you have a feel for what we're looking at. Again, I'd like to reiterate, these are co-locates. They're, they're already existing cell tower sites. And Intellos will come in and co-locate on the towers that are already there. In the case of Barron, this is a view from the tower. If you're on Fox Hill Road and you're looking at the southwest quadrant of the facility, there's two ball fields. This is the back ball field, and you can see the compound behind it. The access to that ball field is off of, I believe it's Delmar Street, which you access coming in off of Plantation off of Fox Hill Road. You see the fence there. That fence, as, as you come in through there, then you have a pathway here and another path gate over here to access the compound. Again, this is just, just showing you the communication compound. You'll notice that it's landscaped. And what they would like to do is to come out, this is the site plan that's also included in your packet. But they would come out and use additional ground lease space to put their facilities or to put their communications hardware, and then go back and re-landscape so that it's presentable and, and, you know, suitable to the neighborhood because we want to make sure that everything looks good. Some of the terms and conditions of the Barron co-locate include an annual consideration of $18,448 with a 3% escalation clause each year following the initial year. In regards to the term, there's an initial term of five years with four renewal terms of five years each. There will be an automatic renewal after the initial term and one renewal term. So for 10 years, they would be able to co-locate. And then automatic renewals of five years each unless 180 days notice is given by the tenant or the school board gives 360 days notice to them. That's kind of a brief summary of the co-located Barron. I know that there was a lot of documentation along with a copy of the lease that we included along with the site plans. Some of it is kind of difficult to read because of the size of it, and I apologize for that. We have representatives from Intellos with us, Mr. Roger Hewitt and Mr. Mark Cornell are here. If, if there's some specific questions that the board members have, they can address any of the very specific questions. The general questions, I think, Ms. Reeves and myself are prepared to address.
Ms. Henry?
The plat was, I couldn't, I couldn't do anything with that. It's, it's my understanding from the photographs that, and just the implication of the plat that I couldn't read, is that none of this is going to look substantially different than it does now.
Well, at Barron, what will happen is that there will be an extension. I'm going to highlight for you the existing compound.
Right.
And what they propose to do is to acquire additional leased ground space that would come out in this area. And they would remove the existing landscaping that was in front and then re-landscape around it. So at Barron, it would kind of extend closer towards the ball field. But from this point, which would be the point closest to the ball field, it would still be about 75 feet, plus or minus, to the back diamond.
And it's going to have a similar appearance. It's all going to be green and friendly-looking and so forth. And so we're not going to have any big ugly boxes that show any differently than anything does now with that stealth pole.
The landscaping is a part of the program. And this one is, the tower at Barron is not a stealth pole. It's the tower at Mallory that is a stealth pole.
Other questions from board members? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hellman.
So moving on to Mallory, this is the stealth pole that Mrs. Henry is referring to. You can see it just kind of stands out. This is a picture that was taken from Candlewood Drive, which runs on the southern border of Mallory Elementary School. And you can see that they've basically put lights here for the ball field, and then the remainder of the tower extends above that. Now, at Mallory, the school board property line runs approximately along this fence. And the city has the access easement, or Intellos would have an access easement with the city, not us, to get back to the site of the compound. This is where the compound is. And under the current lease, the current lease space is not all enclosed. The, the lease that we have currently with the ground lease is bigger than what we show on, or what is fenced in with this compound. So what the proposal is, is that they would come this way towards us away from the ball field and fence that area in, which is shown on the plat. This just basically shows you the proximity from the compound to the stealth pole. And I believe that's about 65, plus or minus feet. Down here, you see the existing compound area. And what they plan to do is fence in this area, which is currently leased. This, there's currently a lease for, an easement there for the lease. They would fence that in and add their communication equipment. Now, one of the bonuses for the school board on this particular co-locate, as you can see, I think I can speak pretty much for everybody when we say that, you know, this is just kind of an ugly compound. So one of the conditions is that this whole area will be landscaped, similar to that at Barron, which would then have the, the trees and the spruces and the low growth and everything. So that it would be an improvement to the visual situation or as you look at the, as you look at it. Now, the terms and conditions of this co-locate are $15,870 per annum, again with a 3% annual escalation clause. And the terms of the contract are the same. There's an initial term of five years, four renewals. After 10 years, there would be automatic renewals unless 180 days notice is given by the tenant or 360 days notice given by the landlord.
Any questions from board members?
If we could just back up, I'm sorry, real quickly to the site at Barron. I know you mentioned 75 feet from the diamond. Can you clarify for me what that means exactly? Is that the...
Yes, ma'am.
The end of the baseball field? I always think of the diamond as...
Well, the home plate.
Okay.
Because at Barron, the particular ball field, home plate is closest to the compound, and they're hitting the balls away from where the compound area is. As you get closer to Fox Hill Road, there's another ball field there, which the diamond is closest to Fox Hill Road, and you're hitting the balls towards the compound. But the, the separation is such that you don't need to worry about that. But what we wanted to make sure that you understood was that when they extended this compound, there would still be about 75 feet that would separate the back of the ball field from the compound.
So it wouldn't interfere with play?
No, ma'am.
Any other questions on these lease agreements? Okay. That finishes up our deliberation items, unless anyone else has anything they'd like to pull on that for further clarification. We move now to deliberation first read. Our first item is 8.01, Revision of School Board Policy JEC, School Admissions. Hi, Dr. Johnson. Would you like to speak to this policy for us?
Yes, I would. I just want to make a couple of comments. Ms. Reeves and I have conferred, especially regarding the legal citations, and they're not all-inclusive. And so we are going to break them out because while it says 22.1-3 through 22.1-5, there are some intervening code citations that are not related to school admissions. So we're going to break them out and list them individually as they actually relate to the intent of this policy.
Okay.
And additionally, as you can see in the strike-throughs, we moved all of the policies that were referenced that are related to school admissions. The, we decided that it'd be better just to leave them as cross-references. And there is an additional cross-reference that we will be including, which is JECAA, Admission of Homeless Children.
Any questions for clarification on this? Okay, we move next to item 8.0...
And, and, one further thing. The, the actual policy, you know, refers to, we're going to follow the Code of Virginia and gives all the citations with respect to school admissions. And we'll just take that citation out and just say that we're going to follow the Virginia Code. Because what we're going to do is list under legal the appropriate Virginia Code. Does that make sense?
Yes. Item 8.02, Revision of School Board Policy JECAA, Admission of Homeless Children. Dr. Johnson, is that yours? Is that your policy or...
No, it's...
Ms. Reeves, would you comment on that?
It's simply that, it's simply to align, to add cross-references. We added cross-references that required this one to be updated. This one was very recently adopted and updated, but it needs to be updated with respect to, to the one cross-reference that was added when we did... These, the, all the Student Health Services physical exams and student immunizations. When we did all of those policies with Ms. Lawrence, they referenced this one, so we need to go back and align it.
Any questions from board members on this? We move on to item 8.03, Revision of School Board Policy, GCCB, Employment of Family Members. Ms. Ruth?
Good evening. My iPad won't get an internet connection tonight, so this may be a little awkward. GCCB is employment of family members. Just have a couple of wordsmithing changes with this particular policy, and the cross-references have all been deleted. Two of the policies, GCD and GDD, no longer exist, and policy GCQA does not pertain to this particular policy.
Any questions from board members?
Okay, we move on to item 8.04, Revision of School Board Policy, GCBBC, Overtime Compensation Time Policy, and GCBBC-R, formerly GCBBD, Overtime Compensation Time Guidelines.
Yes, ma'am. With GCBBC, the original policy, we have added a legal citation, the actual code section for the Fair Labor Standards Act, and a cross-reference for a policy. With this particular policy, this is the law. If there are any wordsmithing changes that the board would like to see, we can certainly wordsmith it as much as you like, but this is the law, and so we won't be able to change the actual intent of the policy. But we did want to add the legal citation on that. We are also recommending with what was GCBBD, its overtime and compensatory time guidelines. I am not sure why, in 2009, it was approved as its own policy, but because it really is so closely tied to GCBBC, we would recommend that it become a regulation. The changes, again, we added the citation for Fair Labor Standards Act, and the guidelines initially had said that this policy only covers full-time, non-exempt employees, but there are specific sections of this policy that do apply to part-time and temporary non-exempt employees, so we have made that modification in that first paragraph. Exempt employees are not covered by this at all, as are elected officials are not, volunteers, independent contractors, the rest of that group, absolutely not covered, but part-time and temporary are covered by portions. Standardized the language as we are trying to do with building administrators and department heads, and, excuse me, we do maintain a list of employee groups and/or departments that are, excuse me, overtime eligible. However, that's a payroll department and not human resources that's keeping that list, so we just made that change. And, again, some language standardization, and that would be it for that particular policy or regulation.
Next item is 8.05.
Yes, ma'am. With GCB, this particular one, excuse me, again, standardizing language where we're trying to use instructional rather than professional. We have also removed the reference in the title to compensation plans, because this policy didn't really have anything to do with compensation plans. It does, however, deal with instructional contracts, and we've just kind of updated it to give better definitions of temporary teachers or substitutes. Oops. Oh, no. Computer's going crazy. And have a specific reference in there as to coaching contracts, and we have also updated the cross-references.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
We move to item 8.06, Revision of School Board Policy, GB, General Human Resources Policies, formerly General Personnel Policies.
Is it okay if we skip back to GCB-R, because those two are tied together, and my fault, I paused and forgot to go over that one? Sorry about that.
Sure.
On that particular regulation, you'll notice we've changed that from professional staff to teacher rather than instructional staff, and that's because this particular policy does refer only to those individuals who are on the teacher scale. And so we wanted the title to be specific. We didn't want it to include all instructional staff, because not all of the groups that we would consider instructional staff would be covered. So that's why it's very specific to teachers. And other than that, just changed the legal reference, added as amended, but this does specifically speak to the contractual period of employees on the teacher scale.
Okay.
That's the reason for that one, and I'm sorry.
Now to 8.06.
Now to 8.06, which is Policy GB, and changed the title from General Personnel Policies to General Human Resources Policies. And, Ms. Reeves, now, is now the time to mention our other request? I'm not sure how we're putting that forward.
You can certainly ask again.
Now that I, okay. We are requesting that in conjunction with the change to this policy title, that we also change the name of Section G from Personnel Policies to Human Resources Policies. We would like to make that change as well. And the policy itself, just tried to, the spirit of this is more in line with our strategic plan, and that was the reason and the focus, the policies that we were putting in place, we're trying to make sure support our strategic plan, and so we just wanted to have that focus in this policy as well.
Any questions from board members?
And did you understand that other request? It's going to be for all 100-plus that's called Personnel under Section G would all be changed to Human Resources.
Yeah. The title for Section G would just say Human Resources Policies rather than Personnel Policies.
And we wouldn't be bringing each one of them back just to change that. It would be a clerical sweep.
Well, we'll consider that in deliberation. I understand it. I think other board members are clear on that. Okay. We move to item 8.07, Revision of School Board Policy, GBM, Instructional Staff Grievances.
Okay. Again, the language changed to move from professional to instructional staff grievances. This particular grievance process does only cover employees that are required to hold a Virginia, either teaching license or some sort of Virginia license, so it would include your social workers, school psychologists, and other professionals that are required to hold that license. And we've just updated the language a bit, added the link to the website for the state grievance process. This is mandated by the state, every school division in Virginia. The document itself is called the Procedure for Adjusting Grievances, and so that would give you a link straight to that, and we've also added a cross-reference.
I know this isn't time to discuss, but if we just made the distinction in the other one, that something is just for teachers and not other instructional personnel, are all paraprofessionals certified?
No, none of them are. They are not required to hold an instructional license, and they are not covered by this.
So this should be grievances for licensed staff?
We would consider instructional assistance support staff.
Okay.
Within the definition of instructional staff requires them to hold a Virginia license.
Okay, that's fine.
And we had that in one of our other policies.
Okay. We're good.
Other questions?
We move to item 8.08, Revision of School Board Policy, GBACA, Staff Dress Code.
There are actually no recommended changes to this particular policy. The reason we are bringing it through, as of tonight, with the policies that were approved in action, the Human Resources section of the policy manual is 100% compliant. You will begin seeing, I have developed a five-year cycle so that we can review a chunk of HR policies between 15 and 20 each year, so that we will always remain compliant. Because the vast majority of them have been updated within the last two years, you're going to, for the next three years probably, going to be reviewing policies that are relatively new, and this is one of those. So hopefully, there will not be too many adjustments to the policies, but this is an example of one of those.
I actually took one comma out, so you did make one minor edit.
Oh, sorry.
Any questions from board members?
We move to item 8.09, Revision of School Board Policy, GBEB, Reports of Certain Acts to School Authorities.
Okay. This particular policy, excuse me, we updated a legal reference, and the policy, by and large, says exactly what the old policy says. However, the old policy was straight from code. We've rewritten it so that it's a little more reader-friendly, we hope, broken it out, so it's not all clustered together, and are hoping that it will be, again, a little more user-friendly for folks. And we've also added or changed a cross-reference and deleted one.
Any questions from board members?
We move on to item 8.10, Revision of School Board Policy, GCBD, Staff Attendants.
For this particular policy, when it was initially implemented in 2007, that was coincided with the time that we had just started using timesheets and staff attendance. There was, there was a need for, I think, some kind of philosophical explanation of staff attendance. We've kind of moved away from that. Things have become standard procedure now. It's just the way we do business, so we've kind of removed the editorializing that was in that first paragraph. And then, other than that, again, updated some language. The other probably most significant, we wanted to make sure, in terms of allowable absences, that there was an understanding that, you know, that changing schedules would not have a negative impact on the school or department.
Any questions from board members for clarification? Okay, that concludes our deliberation first read. We move on to informational items. Dr. Shiflett?
I do have just a few. The Star Achievers Academy Breakfast with Stars will be Tuesday, October 9, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at Embassy Suites, and we hope that all of you will attend. It's always a great event, and it supports one of our wonderful programs in Hampton City Schools. The Virginia Board of Education will have a public hearing on revisions to the standards of quality, and it will be held in Bethel High School's auditorium on October 18, and it begins at 7:00 p.m. Tomorrow, the members of the DLT will be going out to schools to read, jumpstarts, read for the record, and we'll be reading Ladybug Girl and The Bug Squad. And I'll be going to Langley, to Mrs. Haislip's room, and other members of the DLT will be going to other schools throughout the division. This is always a very special time for us, as we get to go in the classrooms and read to our young students, and so we're all looking forward to it. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett, any other informational items from board members?
Well, Madam Chairman, you could certainly share. A number of board members were at last evening's President's Council meeting of the PTA Council, and just want to congratulate Ms. Kroom and all of her board on a great organizational start to the year and a philosophy of providing lots of useful information to parents, and it was very informative, and I know we all enjoyed being there with them.
Other informational items from board members? Okay, our next meeting will be held October 17, 2012. If there's no further business to come before this, this meeting is adjourned.